Starting, we had a protracted public hearing that started at four o'clock and we're trying to give everybody time to be heard, but eventually ran out of time. But we're delighted that you are here now and want to start on our regular meeting. And as we typically do with our official meetings, we start our agenda with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Would you please stand as you are able for the invocation and pledge of allegiance?
Can we bow for a moment of prayer? Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you this evening for your grace and for your mercy. We approach you with thanksgiving and praise, for we understand that every good and perfect gift comes from you. We ask you now, Lord, to bless the city of Macon and Bibb County. We ask you more specifically to bless this meeting tonight. Your blessings in your hand be upon our mayor and our commissioners and each one present. We pray this now in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, B. Seager. Our invocation tonight was given by Pastor Bo Turner. Bo is the third generation Pentecostal preacher. Born into a pastor's home, father served as pastor for over forty years and accepted the call to ministry in 1988. Served as state evangelist of Church of God of Prophecy until 1991, then continued Church of God Cleveland, Tennessee, where he continued his evangelics ministry. During his tenure there, he traveled throughout the southeast, witnessing salvation of hundreds, becoming the senior pastor of Harvest Renewal Worship Center in 1995. He was able to grow the church from just a handful to the largest church in that city. It was during this time he launched his first successful television ministry, This Life's For You. In December 2007, Pastor Bo heeding the call of God moved from South Georgia to Macon, Georgia, to become senior pastor of the Real Life Church, one of the fastest growing churches in the middle Georgia area with over eleven hundred members. Since taking over as senior pastor, he's launched a new television ministry airing on our local CTN entitled, "Living the Real Life." Pastor Bo Turner, thank you very much for giving us invocation and we wish you well. Our pledge of allegiance was led tonight by two of our young people who are both in the 4-H club. Nicholas Jackson, Nicholas, there he is. Nicholas Jackson is a Macon-Bibb County 4-Her who will be a senior this year at Central High School. Nicholas, well-rounded student who works hard to excel in his academics and extracurricular activities, ranked third in his class and has received Georgia Certificate of Merit for being in the top five percent. He attended college courses this summer at Central Georgia Technical College, where he had the highest GPA in math and English. Nicholas excels outside the classroom, much as he does inside. He's a member of the Central High School Marching Sugar Bear Band and has served as first chair percussionist since the eighth grade. And we thank you very much, Nicholas, for being here. And, um, Rhiannon, how close is that to the pronunciation? Rhiannon Weimer?
Rhiannon.
Rhiannon, thank you very much. Rhiannon Weimer, also a Macon-Bibb County 4-Her. She'll be a junior this year at the Academy for Classical Education. She's excelled in her academics at ace, where she's currently on the principal's list. Rhiannon enjoys singing and has had the honor of being chosen for the All-State Chorus for three consecutive years. Very active 4-Hers. Rhiannon has completed three years at DPA in the Human Development Project, where she discusses mental health benefits of the martial arts. She's a 4-H team leader and often volunteers her time in a variety of things. So, you know, in this day and age, when you hear so much bad about young people in this city, how refreshing it is to see such talented young people and doing great things. So, we thank you very much for being here with us tonight and wish you well in your future studies and academics. Next item of business, approval of minutes. And there were several different sets of minutes that were distributed and prepared previously. Minutes of the pre-commission meeting of July 17th and the regular commission meeting of July the 17th. The public hearing on short-term vacation rentals that was held on July the 19th. Those minutes have been prepared and distributed. Minutes of the public hearing regarding the regulation of alcoholic beverage licensing that was also held on July the 19th. Those minutes have been prepared, as well as minutes of the public hearing held at 10:00 on July the 31st regarding the budget and the minutes of the public hearing held at 6:00 on July 31st. Can I get a motion to approve those sets of minutes or if there are any changes? Got a motion by Commissioner Wynn and second by Commissioner Allen. Further discussion, hearing none. All in favor of approval of the minutes, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it and the minutes are approved. Momentarily, I've got an invited guest that has been asked to be here, Catherine McLeod, with First Choice Primary Care, to make an important announcement for us. Ms. McLeod, thank you very much for being with us and you're recognized at this time.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem.
Adjust that microphone right and speak right into it, so we can all hear.
All right. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the commission. I am not here to talk about the military. I'm here on behalf of our Board of Directors to tell you some good news about what we think is one of the best-kept secrets in Macon, and that is our Community Health Center, First Choice Primary Care. Next week is National Health Center Week. Around the country, organizations like ours will be celebrating over fifty years of the Community Health Center program. There are over ten thousand community health center sites. There are thirty-four organizations like ours in the state of Georgia. Some have been around for forty years. We've been here since 2007. We got our start. Community health centers are independent, nonprofit, non-governmental, locally-controlled organizations. We're a 501(c)(3) with a Board of Directors. I've recognized two of them who are present here. You will recognize Camille Hope, Roz McMillan, David Parrish, Albert McQueen, Ms. Frankie Lewis, Jonathan Alderman, Dr. Tom Duval, Dr. Steve Corkery, Chief Riggins, Linda Holland, Mabel Wheeler. These are all people with longstanding involvement and interest and knowledge about the needs in our community. And that's the role of our Board. The majority of them are required to be patients at our health center. So, if they don't get a phone call or get their prescriptions sent in, I hear about it. So, it's a consumer-driven organization. We have five doctors, seven full-time nurse practitioners, and four part-time nurse practitioners. They're all employed by our health center. So, we're not what people think. We're not a free clinic. We're not all volunteers. We're all employed by the health center. We have six locations now. Our main site is on Walnut Street, just down from State Bank. We have a school-based health center that sits on the ground of Ingram-Pie Elementary. We serve the children in the school, as well as the staff, but also people that live across the street in Felton Homes, other people that live in the neighborhood. We have a site inside the Bibb County Health Department, and Commissioner Lucas is familiar with that. We partner with the Health Department and River Edge in that location. And we operate the clinic at Daybreak. We have a site in Warner Robins, near the base. And most recently, we opened, became, went in partnership with Dr. Bill Brooks in South Macon. Commissioner Schlesinger was there when we did ribbon cutting. So, that medical, existing medical practice became part of our organization. Last year, we saw over nine thousand patients, individual people. This year, we've already seen almost eight thousand. We will be beyond ten thousand patients this year. About a third of those people have no insurance. The remainder have Medicare or Medicaid or commercial insurance, and some people go back and forth between those different categories. Our patient population is about sixty percent women, about two-thirds African-American, about five hundred of our patients are homeless or in some kind of transitional housing program. We spend a lot of time treating chronic diseases. About last year, forty-five percent of our patients had high blood pressure and almost twenty percent had diabetes. You all know those chronic diseases are real challenges in our community. So, we spend a lot of time trying to work with them and find medications that work, they can afford. Our patients come from primarily right in the heart of Bibb County. The most come from 31206, that zip code. We've seen, already seen sixteen hundred people from that zip code this year. Our payroll is, over this year will be $3.7 million. Three point three million of that is in Bibb County, the remainder in Warner Robins. We have seventy-five employees. So, we're bringing employees and businesses into downtown and into other parts of the We work, as I said, with River Edge, the Health Department, the school system, Navisant, Coliseum, Houston Healthcare. We're always looking for opportunities to collaborate. We just wanted you to know that we were here as a resource. We do get a federal grant that's about, not quite forty percent of our budget, that allows us to discount charges to someone whose income is below two-hundred percent of poverty. So, they pay, people pay on a sliding fee scale. And that's the shortest version I can come up with of what a health center is. We just wanted you to know, we are here and happy to be part of-
And where are you located? Where are the offices here in Macon?
770 Walnut Street is our main office down-
And you see people with insurance, on Medicare, Medicaid, and without insurance?
All of the above.
A federally qualified healthcare organization?
Yes, sir.
FQHC?
Yes.
Catherine, thank you for what you and your other folks say-
Thank you for the time. I appreciate it. I know you've got a lot on your plate. Thank you.
We do indeed. But thank you very much for being in for what you do for us. I've got, I've got two lights on. I'm not, I'm not quite sure what's going on. Commissioner Watkins, I had a light from you and then Commissioner Jones as well?
Yes, and mine was for, for our agenda. We haven't approved it yet, but Item C, I wanted to remove that. I have quite a few pieces of discussion on that item, as I think it's a poor contract. And I know some other commissioners have some reservations as well. So, I was making a motion to remove that item from the agenda.
Got a motion and second to remove Item C from the agenda. Is there further discussion about that? Commissioner Jones, were you, different? Okay, well, then is there further discussion about that?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem, tell me.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Actually, no. Item C is a contract to give ADS an additional $2 million to do the work of our solid waste. What I would ask is, Judd, the attorney, is Section 13 of the Charter, do I need a resolution to call for, for this, which is a inquiry and investigation into the affairs of a restructured government? To conduct any department or officer, agency of the reconstructed government participate in a hearing, and that hearing shall be closed to the public. But we have to adhere to Chapter 14 of Title 50 when that is done. So, my question is, do we need a resolution to bag that up or with that? Because we don't want to go public here with the information. That's why we just tried to move it from the agenda.
Well, my thought is that that would be-
I was asking the attorney, Mr. Mayor.
My thought, though, is that that didn't germane to whether or not to remove this from the agenda. That would be something separate. But you could take up with the attorney about whether or not you need a resolution to do that. So, the question is whether or not to remove this item from the agenda for tonight. Is there further discussion about whether or not to remove Item C, which is a resolution to authorize the mayor to execute a fourth amendment to the agreement with Advanced Disposal Services?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, there's been more information given. What I've done in this community is went out with other commissioners and just tried to educate the public on this matter. I know we have another piece of legislation to take this particular garbage act back to quarterly. And so, there is some additional information that has come up that I think this entire commission needs to be aware of, and I think that needs to be done either in an executive session, but yet still calling for a citizens review commission, or this commission can call for an investigation into that. So, however we do it, but there's information that I think maybe even yourself, if you're not aware of it, and other commissioners may need that additional information. And as we are going out to further educate the public on this, that won't stop. But just, just so to let you and the commissioners know.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Commissioner Schlesinger?
Question is strictly procedural. If we remove it from the agenda, I don't have any problem voting to remove it. Where does it go from there? Are we sending it back to committee?
I would defer to the attorney, but I would think it would go back to the committee from which it came.
Our rules don't specify. It would be up to the presiding officer to assign it back to a committee. This commission could, though, amend the motion to refer it back to a committee. That's what we've typically done.
It sounds like it might be a committee of the whole issue.
Especially if it's going to be an executive session?
Correct.
Would you take that as a friendly amendment, refer off the agenda and refer it back to the committee of the whole? That considered a friendly amendment and the second still stands? Okay. Is there further conversation, or further discussion about this? Commissioner Watkins, got your light on, sir?
I just wanted to add, I think Commissioner Tillman makes some good points that I found interesting in talking to him about managerial concepts. But my primary concern is that we know that we are, we are increasing the contractor's amount by $2 million, and we don't have a document that clearly states the service delivery moving forward, or how that $2 million is going to be offset in the solid waste budget. And I asked for that for a couple, at the last couple of meetings, and it was told that it would be delivered. And as of today, I still don't have anything. So, before we make a major business decision, we need to finish our due diligence. And I know that was, we were planning on having some time for this during pre-commission, but pre-commission has been scratched from our budget, I mean, scratched from our agenda today.
Thank you. Commissioner Lucas, got your light on.
Thank you. I certainly am in favor of this. When we entered into this contract, I think I voted against it. I think there were a couple of other, Commissioner Watkins, I know, voted against it. I think Commissioner Vivins as well, because we had concerns from the very beginning. And this got off to a rough start, and it's been rougher and rougher all the way through. And now, we're at a crisis, and we've got some really serious things to deal with. And I've heard all of this week from my constituents and some others in other districts, who, people who are saying, "What in the world are y'all doing? My garbage is not being picked up." When you had the, when you had, they're saying, "When you had the garbage collection service in-house, you did a much better job. I knew the folks." And this is not anything to disparage the employees of Advanced Disposal, because they do, I'm sure, the best they can with what they have to work with. However, there's something wrong here. And so, I certainly am pleased that we're going to take another look at that, especially before approving a contract that allows for an additional $2 million of taxpayers' money on top of the $6 million that we're paying now for less than optimal service. So, I will be supporting the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas. No further discussion. I assume you're ready to vote then. All in favor of the motion to remove this item, Item C, from tonight's agenda, refer it back to the committee of hold for further action, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes clearly have it. The Item C is removed from tonight's agenda and will be referred back to the committee of the whole for further study and evaluation. Next item on our agenda now, Commissioner Jones, did you have another item that you wanted to-
Yes, sir.
Am I right?
I want to make a motion to amend the budget, amend the agenda with a budget proposal. I want to make it the first item on the, on the agenda, please.
I don't, well, first of all, I guess I don't understand, because the first item, once we, once we get to it, the first item, is the ordinance to establish the millage rate.
And that's what this, and that's what this does.
Sir?
And that's what this will do.
I mean, does this take an amendment to the agenda to-
This is, this is an amendment, this is an ordinance to adopt an amended budget and appropriate sums for the Operation Macon-McKenna-Gut for the fiscal year 2019 to provide for a millage rate increase of 2.760. So, this would adopt a budget with a 2.760 increase. And, well, that's a different item. We're setting the millage on the, 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 Agenda Item A sets the millage. So, this right here amends the budget, the current budget. The current budget as it is provides for the four-mill increase. This budget would provide for a 2.760, this piece of legislation would provide for a 2.760 millage increase. So, it's an additional item.
Well, I, I, I find, I find this to be an interesting dilemma. We do have a motion to amend the agenda to add an item, which is the formulation of a budget. And we have a motion and a second. However, I don't quite understand how that works to fit in with the budget that was previously adopted and amended with the ten amendments that brought us here to set the millage rate tonight. I don't know how that squares up with that.
Well, this would amend that agenda, that, that, this would amend that ordinance, Mr. Mayor. That current amendment that was passed, and eleven amendments, put us at 4.2 approximately. This would go back to a budget that he's worked with the finance officer on, with a 2.760 millage rate increase. It provides for a, this legislation provides for a employee contribution through the pension plan, a four percent contribution to the pension plan, and three assistant directors to be added to the budget, removal of the three furlough days and fund balance transfer of 3.9 million.
As a presiding officer, we have, have a motion to amend the agenda to add that item. So, those in favor of adding that item, i.e. a new, a new or substitute budget, for our consideration. And typically, an amendment to the agenda would come at the end. You'd put it at the end of the agenda from what, huh?
You do it at the beginning. You have to do it at the beginning.
No, 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 no. I say if you, if you amend the agenda, you typically add it as the last item. You don't, you don't insert it-
No, I don't disagree with that. That's something you, that's something the commission-
Right. You don't typically insert it at the first. You typically add it at the end of the, at the end of the agenda. Huh? So, is the motion to, not just to amend the agenda to add it, but add it as item number one?
We're going to be discussing the millage rate already. That's item number one, so I wanted to discuss it in conjunction with that.
Then why are we amending the agenda at all? Why don't we just discuss it as part of that? Because it's not, it's not just millage.
Because this is, Mr. Mayor, this is a, I mean, I'm not, this is a piece of legislation that would amend the budget. Typically, we'd have had the opportunity in pre-commission to discuss this, and we didn't. But I mean, this is a separate piece of, this is an amendment to the budget. That is different than what is being voted on as Item A, which is setting the millage rate. So, but it's up to the pleasure of this body and where they want to approve allowing this to be added.
And I've got now four lights on, so let me go first to Commissioner Schlesinger. Can you shed any light on this?
Again, this is just a procedural question. Wouldn't this be best presented as an amendment to Item Number One, when we're discussing Item Number One itself?
I suppose, I'll let the attorney speak for, speak for himself.
Well, Item Number One just sets the millage rate. That's all it does. It does not-
Isn't this doing the same thing from four-
No, this is amending the budget. This is adopting a new budget.
It's changing the budget. It's trying to adopt a new, a new and different budget, is I understand it.
So, example, if you were to approve this piece of legislation as proposed by Commissioner Jones, you would be adopting a budget based upon a 2.76 mill increase. Then someone would be appropriate, then to make an amendment to, if you were to pass this, to amend the millage rate increase that's been proposed to four mills to match this.
Let me see if I can't get, next waiting is Commissioner Vivins. Commissioner Vivins?
I just, I just want to get an idea of what we'd be leaving off if we, if we did this amendment. What would be left off that we talked about last time?
Right. And that, I suppose, would be discussed if you added it, right, if you added it to the agenda, that would be discussed, especially if we added it as the first item, as I understand Mayor Pro Tem Tillman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I did hear the gentleman make two suggestions, or I think he said he wanted to add his resolution as an amendment, and then he also said that I think we're overlooking that. I wanted to move it up to add it as a first item. And so, so it'd be two things that we'd be voting on, and he can clear it up, but I think, thought I heard him say he was trying to move it up as Item One and try to move that up, and that would also require a vote. And he can correct me, but I think that's what I heard him trying to do as well, as the amendment.
No, no, no other, no other light. So, is this one vote or two? Wanted to add it to the agenda and then make it number one, or do you-
That's the discretion of the chair, how you'd like to vote on it. He did ask for both those things, though. You're correct.
So, you're thinking there could be one without the other?
I don't, but I thought I heard him say that.
Well, two separate, two separate. I'm just trying to run a meeting here. So, Commissioner Jones, you've got anything else that you wanted to say, sir?
We're voting on the millage rate. We've already set a budget. We're here to approve or disapprove of millage rate. So, it makes sense to discuss this and see if it passes, and discuss the current, current budget, which equates to this 4.2 or 4.3 mills. It's the appropriate place to put it.
Right. But as I understand it, your amended budget does several things that have been voted down as we've come to this point. Contribution from employees of, is that right? Well, I shouldn't, I shouldn't-
Discuss all of it. I want to discuss it all, not any piece-me-
You're right. You're right. I shouldn't get into the details of that now. So, the question is whether or not, A, to add this item to our agenda for discussion tonight. Those that wish to add this item to our agenda for discussion tonight would vote yes. Those that are opposed to adding it would vote no. Those that are in favor of adding this item to the agenda signify by saying aye. Those opposed to adding it to the agenda say no.
No.
In the opinion of the chair, the noes have it. But let, but, but I saw two, I saw two ayes. Let me see the hands of the ayes. I've got one, two, three. I've got three, three ayes to add it. Let me see the hands of the noes that do not want to add it to the agenda for tonight. Do not, do not. I want to see the hands of the noes. One, two, three, four, five, six, six. So, the item fails to get sufficient votes to be added, that nullifies the need for the second question. So, we're now back on the agenda as prepared and presented. And the next item on our agenda is public comments on agenda, excuse me, on agenda items. And I promised the people that were here earlier for the public hearing that we would hear from them at this point in this agenda, and we've had additional people to sign up that got here just for the comment period and the agenda period, and I'm asking the attorney to kind of- And I'm asking the attorney to kind of go through those at this point to figure out which ones are asking for. Hmm?
They're in the book.
That's what I say, all of the.
All those are on agenda items.
All of these?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, I, I understand from the pu- public hearing, uh, that was on the public hearing about the setting the millage rate, um, Herbert Greenwall was next, but he told me he had to leave. Herbert Greenwall, did you have to leave, or you gone, Herbert Greenwall? Uh, uh, he, he left. Mark Thornton? Mark Thornton of Eight Thirty Three, uh, Chev- uh, Chevy Street? Mr. Mark Thornton? Hmm? Uh, 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 well, I say, uh, Sean King? Sean King apparently le- left us as well and couldn't stay, couldn't stay. Uh, Daryl Hoyle? Daryl Hoyle had to leave us. Gwen, Gwen Westbrook? Ah, Ms. Westbrook, uh, you, you were recognized for three minutes, which was the time, uh, limit that we set on, on comments for the others toward the end of the public hearing. So, recognize for three minutes, please, ma'am.
I first want to ask a question, uh, because one of my, uh, comments were related to, um, the res- C? So do you want me to talk about that on a non-agenda item? Okay, I'm just making sure because you just.
C has been removed, item C has been removed, so.
Okay, but let me finish my question if you don't mind.
Yes, ma'am.
What I'm asking you is, since you all removed this from the agenda, do you need for me to speak on this on a non-agenda item? Because you've removed it off the agenda since I signed up.
Right, what I'm calling on you for now is you were at the public hearing and wanted to speak on the millage rate. Do you still want to speak to us about the millage rate?
I do want to speak to you on the millage rate, but what I'm asking you for is for is the, the, what you took off the agenda, do I need to s- speak about that on the non-agenda because I signed up for the non-agenda item too? You took this off the agenda since I signed up, because I signed up, so just do that. I'll speak on that at, at the non-agenda item.
That's fine.
C that you took off.
Yes, ma'am, that, that, that'd be, that'd be fine.
Okay. I first want to talk about the, um, the property taxes that, that you're proposing to, to raise. Uh, I think that, um, the commissioners shouldn't have never been put in a position to compromise, compromise, uh, agencies that are vital to our community. Um, I think there needs to be some type of law put into place that limits our government, um, to use homeowners' property as a means to, uh, when they're in, when they're in crisis. Uh, there should be a limit, and, and the reason I'm saying that, I can see that if, if the, if the city comes into a crisis and they have to raise property taxes, but every time that something happens, um, our government always mentioned about going up on our, on, uh, homeowners' property taxes. So I think a law, some type of law needs to be put in place where that's limited, where you can just, you can continue to go up, uh, use pro- homeowners' property as a means of, um, to fix the government property of, 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 of problems. So I think that's something that we need to, to really look at. Um, and so, once we do that, I think that we have a lot of, uh, issues that we need to deal with. And one of the things that I think that we need to look at is, is spending. I, I was sitting in the meeting, I, I still think that a forensic audit needs to be done, um, because we really don't know really what's going on. Um, and that was suggested, and then in the meeting, they decided not to, not to do that, just look at certain sections that, that they were, uh, concentrating on. But I think that a forensic audit needs to do to ease the community and the people and the citizens of this community minds as to what's going on, because we really still don't know. But I, um, I know that something has to be done, um, because we are in a crisis, but to continue to raise homeowners' property taxes to fix the crisis of, uh, of our government is not something that needs to continue to happen. So something needs to be put in place to stop that.
Thank you very much, Ms. Westbrook, we appreciate your comments, appreciate you being here. Andy Ambrose was the last person we had signed up to speak, uh. He, he's gone? He left, okay. Uh, now those people that signed up to speak on agenda items, uh, tonight at this meeting, former mayor, uh, Jack Ellis? Is Mayor Ellis here? Uh, Tom Ellington also signed up to speak to us about the millage rate, Mr. Ellington? You are, you are recognized, sir. Bravery would be appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I promise to be brief, I have this many notes right here, one page. Um, I just want to remind the commissioners what they did on July third, when they amended the budget and restored, uh, funding for the so-called outside agencies. Along with that, they also inserted a provision that if this millage rate was not approved, that that funding would cease. And, um, so if you vote not to approve this millage rate tonight, essentially what you're doing is voting to shut down transit, you're voting to close the libraries, you're voting to close down parks, and that's what will happen. No further action will be needed to make that happen other than voting no tonight. There's been talk of alternative budget arrangements. Um, I see that Commissioner Jones attempted to put one on the agenda tonight. Had that made it on the agenda, I would have some questions about whether that was actually keeping with the letter or spirit of the Open Meetings Act to, uh, put something on the agenda and vote on it that quickly of that magnitude. But that's a moot question at this point. Other than that, though, looking at the agenda tonight, you have no other budget amendments proposed to vote on. There is nothing under new business to, uh, to, to vote on next time. If you say no to this millage rate, that's it, and this co- this community will reap the whirlwind. So I urge you, despite the pain, despite the difficulty of this decision, to go ahead and vote yes on this revenue that frankly, this commission already committed itself to in approving those budget amendments on July third. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Ellington, appreciate, appreciate you being here. Ladies and gentlemen, uh, please, please refrain from booing and hissing. Uh, applause, and, you know, uh, I, I can understand that, but, but we, we try to conduct these meetings where reasonable people can disagree, a- and we don't want to boo and hiss. Uh, so please, please, uh, have a little decorum for us. Um, Commissioner Jones, you, you signed up to speak, but I gather that was, has been rendered moot at this point?
Long as I have a chance to speak, we don't have any political shenanigans. I want to reserve my time to speak on number A, the letter A.
Well, I, I certainly, certainly don't want to conduct a meeting that has political shenanigans in it, and, and certainly any commissioner, any commissioner certainly is, uh, able to speak, and there's no time limit. There's no time limit. Mr. Wade Horton? Wants to talk to us about the millage rate? Mr. Horton, thank you for your, for being here and for your patience, you're recognized to speak, sir.
Okay, thank you. How y'all doing today?
Fine, fine.
Uh, I hope y'all go ahead and approve this millage rate, which is painful for everybody. If you don't, I'm gonna get a car, and I'm gonna stick my cane outside the window, and I'm driving down the street. Because I got to get where I gots to go. Now, um, I must remind you guys, the reason we are here at this point is because of consolidation. So I urge those of you who were, were against consolidation, when y'all vote, y'all say, "I'm voting to raise these taxes" because y'all were for consolidation. And the other of you need to say, "I'm voting to raise taxes because I made an error in judgment in voting for consolidation." That's why we're here. Sixty million dollars has gone out of the budget because of the city being dissolved. Those people were being taxed double taxes. It was an intention to have two tax districts, which those citizens would continue to be double taxed. But so many people came down to, uh, talk about and admonish that idea, that, that was gotten rid of. That was gotten rid of, there has to be, uh, something to make up that. What is being proposed tonight, and, and, and this is something that people in, in the county were told it was not going to be a raise in taxes, I understand that. But what has really happened is that amount of money that was taken out of the budget is being redistributed to everybody. These services are very well needed for a lot of people who benefit from them. Many of us benefit from all of these services. There are so many people complaining about their taxes going up, but guess what? People that rent, their rent is about to go up. So it is not just taxpayers or homeowners whose taxes are about to go up. That thirteen dollars a month, that's going to be passed on to someone's rent too, unless you live in public housing, which they can't smoke. But, you know, the, the people that are mainly complaining about, uh, these taxes going up, they paying their taxes out, their abundance, but there are a lot of widow women out here who are paying out of their needs. When you guys think about the things that you're about to consider, you need to consider that. Who gave the most, that person paying out of their abundance or the person paying out of their need? I think Jesus said that, that, uh, widow woman paying out of her need was greater than all of that. So we need to be mindful and consider what you're doing, you're, you're making decisions that affect us all.
Thank you, Mr. Horton.
Was that three minutes or five?
Yes, sir, thank you very much for your time, sir.
Okay, in closing, I, I want to urge you guys to do the painful thing that you, uh, come to do, and we're standing with you. That's why we are here, that's why my voice is here to let you know I support, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Horton, we appreciate it. There were three people that signed up, uh, 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 about solid waste, uh, and since that item has been removed from the agenda, I don't think these are going to be, uh, uh, agenda items, comments, and now, uh, Quentin, uh, Keenan, Rod Dennis, and Maurice Jackson, are you still here? Yeah, I, I, I think when we took the item off the agenda, that, 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 Peter Taylor? Mr. Taylor? I'm sorry, no, this is, this is Peter, Peter Taylor wants to talk about budget and taxes. And, and that is still on the agenda, sir. You're recognized for three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
And the commission. Good evening, my, uh, fellow taxpayers. It's a pleasure for me to be here this evening. We have seen a lot of good things happen in this great city over the years, and I've been here all my life. And we, we'd like to see some more great things happen in this city. Mr. Mayor, we appreciate what you've done and the commission. However, since consolidation, we have seen the ditch get a little deeper in the way the finances have been run in this city. And we feel like that the taxpayers should not be hijacked in this situation. Now, we know we got to do what we got to do, we know that, and we understand that. But we just don't expect that this is to continue. Now, I speak not only for myself, but I do speak for union labor in this town, because they pay a lot of taxes as well, plus they are registered voters. And I hear good things all the time, and I hear bad things all the time, but one of the, the biggest things is that how are we going to attract more good businesses, good schools, education? But it all ends up with the, the taxes that we pay. None of us is rich in here, I don't think, but if I was, I'd probably be doing a bit better job of contributing, but I'm not. What's good for the gambler is good for the goose. It is not always an easy task to make the right decision, but it's the best decision that we need to make in order to deal with the situation. And I always tell my wife, no matter what, we gonna, we gonna get through it. And I believe we're gonna get through this, there's no, no doubt. If you are not at the table, you're on the menu.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Taylor, we, we, well said, sir.
Thank you so very much, Mr. Mayor.
We appreciate, we appreciate your comments, sir.
Thank you, sir, have a good evening.
Uh, Ms. Cleve Rogers?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor and commissioners. I am sixty-eight years old, have lived in Macon, Georgia all my life, and I love it here. Wouldn't want to live anywhere else. I've had people, when I meet people, and I tell them my name and where I live, they look at me and they'd say, "I'm sorry." I said, "Don't sit, look at me and say you're sorry. I can live anywhere in this country, I want to live, I choose to live here." In the past years, this is, by the way, this is the first time I've ever addressed any government body, and you're gonna find that one in just a minute. But in past years, I've heard elected officials complain about the lack of voters showing up when the budget hearing. I've heard them all the time, people just don't seem to care. Nobody ever shows up. Uh, well, I want y'all to look around this room. The only time people don't show up is when they're satisfied with the way you handle their finances. And so I don't think people seem to be too satisfied right now with the job that the, uh, commission has been doing. Tonight, we find ourselves in a real bad situation. A wise person would never make a bad situation worse. Think about that. Today, I hope you become a wise person. I've heard this, that the administration has given inflated revenue projections for the last three or four years. Sir, that belongs to you. I've heard that from several of these people up here. If you gave me the wrong numbers one time, next year, we gonna have a talk. So, I, all y'all sharing this blame, I think he's number one, but I think all of y'all as a collective body, you're part of it. You're guilty by association, so to speak. And so, we have a reserve of thirty-three, I live in the county, by the way, the old county. We have a reserve of thirty-three million dollars. I understand it's four, correct me if I'm wrong, twenty-nine million dollars has disappeared, I don't know where it went. I don't even think y'all know where it went, to be honest with you. Every one of us, every one of you has a household budget, we always do. If we want to do something, I was in business for over thirty years in this county. Every decision I made was based on my revenue, every one of them. That's the way businesses are conducted, it has never changed, it's still that way today. Government is the only entity where, when you don't have enough money, what do you do? Oh, what do you do, marry your raise or write taxes, come on, we're gonna get some more money here. Why don't you do the hard work? The easiest thing in the world to do is spend O P M, other people's money. That's what y'all are doing, you're spending our money. Think about that for just a little bit. My tax dollars is going to subsidize Bowden Golf Course, never played golf in my life, couldn't go there if my life depended on it. But yet, you're asking me to subsidize something like that. I'm not saying cut out the bus, there's all you people love the library, God, I love the library too. And I think we should be able to do these things, but is it really government's responsibility to provide me a place to go play golf? I don't think it is, I really don't, gentlemen, ladies, I really don't think that's government's job. Government's job is to provide me with what, fire, police, and courts system, that's your main. Sheriff Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
I think, I think he does a great job. I'd like, I'd like to just leave you for this, with this tonight. I like when you make your decision. I like when you make your decision, I like for you to become a wise person and not make a bad situation worse. I'm not asking you to cut out everybody. I'm just saying, somebody can cut. Everybody can cut. I don't care what your department is, you can do it. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to come and address you. I wouldn't have your job.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
But thank y'all.
Thank you very much, sir. We appreciate it. Tim Thornton, are you still here? I think Tim may have left. He wanted to talk to us about an item that's new business and is going to be referred. And I was going to put him at the end of the agenda. Huh? I did, but I'm going to put you at the comment period at the end if you want to stay because the item that you want to talk about is only new business. And the only thing I'm going to do is read it and refer it to committee. So if you want to wait, we'll take you then at the end of the meeting. Mr. Willie Frazier? Mr. Frazier wants to talk to us about the budget. And Ms. Frazier, you're recognized for three minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for three minutes. I'm going to say this, and I'm going to say it kind of quickly. I decided and said that I was going to talk about the budget because I've been listening to the cries of the people about the budget and about the millage rate and all of that. And I want to talk strictly because it's about the citizens. And when I say citizens, I don't separate the citizens that sit out here from the citizens that sit out there because you are the citizens too as well, even though you're leaders. Because I've heard the cries of you individuals. And I want to see the right thing done by you as leaders. And the reason why I say that is because I've heard the cries of even some of you commissioners. I've heard a couple of you commissioners that's about to sell your homes and about to turn around and do something because of how hard this decision is to make. And I know it's hard to make if you're getting ready to sell your homes as well. So I already know that you imagine what the citizens that sit out there is feeling. So it's not a thing of getting up here and beating down them. You see, with all these cries and stuff, somebody is praying because God is beginning to try to make a difference if you're listening to him and you're here. Because it used to be a time that we was about in God we trust. And that's who I trust at this time. That's why I'm willing to help. Because you know what? Good, bad, evil, or ugly, you're what we got. And I'm on your team. You're the one that's leading. You're the one that's leading me. So if I'm on your team, then I got to try to help you win. You know, I go and tell every other city about Macon. So ain't no way in the world that you're going to tell me that Macon is no good. My mayor is good. My commissioners are good. These citizens are good. And you need to do the right thing where they are concerned and where we are concerned. I'm going to be here speaking. I'm going to be here talking. I'm going to be here standing until you hear me. Because this ain't all about me. And this ain't all about color. This ain't all about one generation of people. This is about all generation of people. I don't care what color you are. I don't care what you ride in. I don't care what you walk in. I don't care about all of that. Because guess what? I will stand for you regardless of what because I don't even have a car. I come down here to try to make a difference. I walk down here. I catch the bus down here. There used to be an idea when there was two buses. The last week when I had to try to catch the bus, it took an hour and fifteen minutes. I thought I had missed the bus. We need those things. We need the libraries because guess what? That's where we gain knowledge at. We're not going to be a city full of dumbfounded people that can't learn and don't know anything.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier.
We need those so we can learn, so we can know, understand this when you get ready to make your decision. The cries of the people, you hear it. And I hear it.
We appreciate your comments. Thank you, sir.
Do the right thing.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda, ladies and gentlemen, is reports from our standing committees. And first is Operations and Finance Committee. And that report will be given to us by Chairman Watkins. Chairman Watkins?
Thank you, sir. The Operations and Finance Committee met on July twenty-fourth, twenty eighteen and took the following action. The committee elected myself, Roger Watkins, as chairman and Commissioner Larry Schlesinger as vice chairman of the Operations and Finance Committee. The committee approved the agreement with Georgia Behavioral Health for Home Investment Program Funds in the amount of three hundred fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-five cent for the construction of five residences at nine four five Maynard Street and nine five eight Schaefer Place to provide rental housing for low-income or homeless individuals. The committee approved an agreement with Macon Area Habitat for Humanity for Home Investment Program Funds in the amount of one hundred ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars for the construction of two single-family homes in Lenmore Estates neighborhood. The committee also approved and adopted the Economic and Community Development Department, CDBG, home and ESG budgets for fiscal year twenty nineteen. And in that, an agreement with the Savannah Construction and Preservation for the construction of a park at Wise Avenue in the amount of five hundred thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars from BLYT funds for Wise Avenue project. The committee approved the following Splot Agreement projects. An agreement with ARS JH in the amount of ninety-five thousand for courthouse annex roofing repairs. An agreement with Custom Truck and Bodywork in the amount of one hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred dollars for all aluminum walk-around rescue excavation vehicle for the fire department. And appropriation of four hundred fifty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars for stormwater emergency management. The committee also approved a budget amendment for the transfer of funds in the amount of ninety thousand dollars for the sheriff's department. This concludes the report of Operations and Finance Committee. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chairman Watkins. The next standing committee, Economic and Community Development Committee, and that report will be given to us by Chairman Lucas. Chairman Lucas?
Thank you. The Economic and Community Development Committee met on July the twenty-fourth, and we took the following actions. The committee elected Commissioner Elaine Lucas as chairman and Commissioner Valerie Nguyen as vice chairman of the Economic and Community Development Committee. This is a short report today. However, we do plan in the future to have the various agencies that are funded under the Community Development Block Grant to come and give us more in-depth information on their services to our citizens. This concludes the report of the Economic and Community Development Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Lucas. Public Safety is next, and that report will be given to us by Chairman Shepard. Chairman Shepard?
The Public Safety Committee met on July the twenty-fourth as well and took the following action on two agenda items. The committee elected myself as chairman and Commissioner Lucas as vice chairman of the Public Safety Committee. And then the committee heard an update from the emergency management team about the sirene system that is now in place. This concludes the report of the Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Shepard. Finally, Facilities and Engineering Committee. And that report will be given by Commissioner Jones.
I don't have a report nor was I here because of medical reasons.
Then maybe Commissioner Watkins. Are you vice chairman? Who's vice chairman? Vice Chairman is Commissioner Allen. Do you have a report?
Chairman Jones was out with some situation with his family. And I was made vice chairman. The Facilities and Engineering Committee met July twenty-fourth, twenty eighteen. The committee elected Commissioner Mallory Jones as chairman and Commissioner Joe Allen as vice chairman of the committee. The committee approved the streetlight banner policy. This completes the report of the Facilities and Engineering Committee. Mr. Mayor?
Excellent. Thank you, Vice Chairman Allen. Next item on the agenda is Consent Agenda, which is used when we take up alcoholic beverage license requests. There are none for us to consider. And that takes us straight into old business. And the first item of old business is pertaining to the millage rate for the budget that was adopted early. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission establishing a millage rate of twenty-one point eight-four-eight mills to be levied and assessed for the year two thousand and eighteen upon the taxable property located in the Macon-Bibb County Tax District and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
On this new budget, it has been framed falsely so over and over again, stemmed from the administration. Raise taxes or you close the library. Raise taxes or you close the health department. Raise taxes or you defund Macon Transit. That's all baloney. That has never been the choice. It has never been the choice. No one wants to defund the library. I've not heard one person say that up here or anywhere else. No one wants to defund Macon Transit. No one wants to defund the health department. The current budget has many good components, but it's physically irresponsible. We considered anything and everything. Local agencies, authorities, nonprofits, state agencies, commissions, and departments, museums. We considered anything and everything. That is, except the homeowners. That is, except the business owners, the taxpayers, the working men and women of Macon and Bibb County. They're the forgotten taxpayers. Don't they count? Without the homeowners, without the business owners, we have no revenue. That's a fact. How did we get to this four-point-two mill? Well, it was a crazy night if you weren't here. We got out the shopping cart and we went racing up and down the aisles and we threw things in there and thinking, well, we're going to spend X. We got up to the register and we'd spent four-point-two mills or four-point-three mills. Your pleasure. By the way, I was so relieved and so comforted to know that wonderful cities, thriving metropolises like Jeffersonville and Gray, the city of Fort Valley, the city of Perry, city of Byron, and the city of Centerville, that we were compared, Macon, Georgia was compared to those thriving metropolises. What an insult to the taxpayers. Common sense, let's compare us to Augusta, Richmond, Columbus, Savannah, Athens-Clark. When we finished with this fiasco, we had funded all museums at the same level as last year. Understand, everybody in this group, we'll just call them agencies, they're all deserving. They all provide great benefits and amenities to this community. But two of the museums told me personally, one the founder, one the executive director, we expect cuts and we can deal with it. So we funded them a hundred percent last year's level. DFAX, a state agency, it was verified. Their budget last year, eight oh seven, five hundred. This year, eight hundred thousand dollars. They had a hundred and forty thousand dollars left over. That's been verified. Where's our common sense? Community Enhancement Authority, June the twelfth, we had a presentation to the commission by Representative James Beverly. Great presentation, doing wonderful things for the community, helping Pleasant Hill Community, all for that. My only reservation was it was a ninety-six thousand dollar addition to the budget when we don't have the money to fund all these things that were already on our plate. Eight thousand dollars a month. Sydney Lanier Cottage funded by private funds. The Big House, Allman Brothers House, funded by private funds. So on June the twelfth, with this nice presentation, we were all there. Perhaps some of you were there. Representative Beverly forgot to disclose he gets a salary of sixty-five thousand dollars, albeit maybe from G-Dot, not from us. Also had a five percent commission if any board member sold a refurbished property. That's unethical. This budget is a gushing wound. It requires surgery. A Band-Aid is not going to fix the problem. We'll be right back here again next year. It's not physically responsible. Figures have been thrown out about how much does your property tax go up? They throw out one little figure. If it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, it's going to be X. So I'm going to read you some exact figures on what the different neighborhoods all over Macon-Bibb County. The first one's in Wood Valley. That's in District Three. Nice little modest house, eighty-five thousand dollars. Their taxes are going up a hundred and forty-three dollars. Stone Edge, another middle-income modest house, valued at a hundred and fifteen thousand. Property tax is going up a hundred and ninety-three dollars. Highland, one of our commissioners lives there. A value of a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars on average, increased two hundred and four dollars. Ponderosa, South Bibb County. South Bibb County's got hit the hardest, as we all know, because... Yeah, anyway. Average house, a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. Your taxes are going up two hundred and thirty-three dollars. Way, another South Bibb County property, valued at a hundred and forty-eight thousand, going up two hundred and forty-eight dollars. This is all based on forty percent of your assessed value. And just in case you're wondering, I've verified the process with the tax assessor's office. Ashford Park, that's in District Four that I represent, valued two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, an increase of three hundred and ninety-six dollars. Three hundred and ninety-six dollars a year. West Bibb County, close to Lake Tobasafki, two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, increased four hundred and thirty dollars. Barrington Hall, one of our good commissioners lives in that district as well. Average price, two hundred and fifty-four thousand, going up four hundred and twenty-six dollars. Weatherby Plantation, off of Tucker Road, middle income, upper-middle income a little bit perhaps. Value two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, increase of four hundred and forty dollars. Of course, when you get into the upper neighborhoods, St. Andrews, upper-income property, average value about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, increase seven hundred and five dollars. Country Club Estates, average value about five hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, increase of eight hundred and seventy-one dollars. All of these figures, and many of them are middle-class, hard-working people in Macon-Bibb County. We know the population is declining. It's not my opinion. It's the opinion of the U.S. Census Bureau. We're adding new businesses, but the population is declining. So that means the tax base is declining. We're giving people too many reasons to leave. This is not a balanced approach to the budget. A tax increase will not solve the deeper problems. My budget amendment that chose not to be voted on funded the Macon Transit Authority. It funded the library. It funded the health department. It defunded one assistant county manager we don't have currently, taking it out of the budget. It defunded one director of small business affairs. It defunded one director of small business or business development. It removed the three furlough days that employees don't like. It removed them. It did add three assistant directors, one at Public Works, one at Facilities, and one at Parks and Beautification. And as you saw on the slide, we have much fewer employees. And as you saw on the slide, we have much fewer employees. We have excellent directors in those three departments. I know and call on them all the time. I wouldn't say it if it weren't true. They are grossly understaffed. Their morale is in the sewer. The pension plan. It's an investment in your future, employees, a four percent investment to the pension plan. The private sector moved away from defined benefit pension plans out of necessity a long time ago. Why would they do that? They weren't sustainable. For survival reasons, they did it. They're not sustainable for Macon Bibb County either. They are not entitlements. They're benefits, the cost of which must be balanced among the needs, desires of the constituents and taxpayers and employees. It's not balanced. This is not a balanced budget. It punishes the homeowner and the business owner. The Fire and Police Pension Fund is solid, a hundred and three percent. The other two are grossly underfunded. I gave the media some handouts. If you want a copy of it, I'd be glad to give it to you. They're underfunded, grossly underfunded. Macon, the former Macon Bibb County, former Bibb County is about sixty-three percent, down to seventy-one percent. Former city of Macon's about ninety percent, a lot healthier. Nationwide, this is not just true for Macon, Georgia. You read about it in the news all the time. Four trillion dollars of deficit in pension plans. It's not just us. If we don't change what we're doing, I can promise you, we'll be right back here again next year and talking about a millage increase. I don't wanna do that. The current budget is not a good budget. It is not physically responsible. It fund, has a lot of good components, but the cuts are not fair, balanced across the board. I yield back.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Jones. Um, one, one point that you raised, I'm gonna ask the county attorney to clarify about the amendments that were adopted with the floor amendment to each one that said if we didn't pass the millage rate necessary, then the amendment was rescinded.
That's correct. Uh, each one of the amendments to the budget had a floor amendment that said that if the millage rate wasn't set at a sufficient rate to fund that amendment uh, by August thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, then we would revert back to the initial budget.
Um, had Commissioner Allen next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, y'all been here a long time today and I have too, and the rest of my colleagues and the mayor has also. The one thing that I did not hear tonight, and this has been a tough, I mean, my twenty-plus years being on the, the board as a commissioner, this has been the toughest of all of them. The one thing I did not hear was talking about the working poor, talking about people that rent. This morning I had an opportunity to talk with, it was not Mr. Jones, but it was a realtor, and it was someone that rents out properties. And I asked him, I said, let me ask you a question. What happens if we increase this millage rate up? He said, what do you mean, what happens? He said, I'm just gonna push it on down the line to those individuals that really can't pay for it, to those that rent. The poor, the working poor, where you can go into and buy a loaf of bread for two seventy-nine. They have a hard enough time. Maybe they won't have bread. Maybe they won't have certain things. I think about that. That's something that really bothers me. You know, like I told you a second, this has been the toughest time of my life at a budget session. It's gonna be a tough tonight. I know, I know my vote. I always stuck by my, the way I'm gonna vote all the time. There gonna be a lot of people leave here tonight happy. There gonna be a lot of people leave here tonight sad. But I want you to remember one thing. We might not agree up here with everything we do. But I am proud of the colleagues and the people I've worked with up here because we tried. We won't all vote for, agree with everything, as you will not always agree with us. But the bottom line is, we did what we thought was right, even though some of you will be mad at me. Some of you will be mad at other people, but the bottom line is, again, we tried and I hope y'all will understand that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Allen. Uh, Commissioner Watkins, got you next, sir.
And in my statement, I don't mean in any way to discount the value of money. I, shoot, I'm American, I live, I understand it is important. We want as much in our pockets as we can. As your representative, I want you to have as much as I can possibly afford to save on, on tax savings. I wish we were sitting here talking about tax cuts. But this year, for a variety of reasons, you can blame who you wanna blame, you can. Whatever the reason is, this is the state of our, our county. There's. We're either gonna, as a community, put a little more extra into the pot this year, or we're gonna do without things. Me personally, the type of things that we're talking about cutting, um, that was approved by the majority of this commission for the one forty-nine budget, defunding all those department, departments and agencies, was a much worse consequence than me and my collective community putting in an extra hundred dollars per person or an extra hundred dollars per household. Uh, granted, I'd rather keep my hundred dollars, but the consequences of not doing that, I think are dire for the community and people who really use those services. Also thinking, I've heard it mentioned quite a few times, we've, we've plotted a whole bunch of different agencies and people and groups against one another. Our employees are, are just as important. So while I understand the sentiment that we could save, I believe, looking at Commissioner Jones's paperwork, um, about what, point four nine five or a half a mill? If we, um, imposed a pension payment system of four percent on, on our employees um, across the board, not giving any respect for folks that have already eligible to retirement or already fully vested, we're just gonna impose a new rule on them. Keeping in mind that over, I've been working here ten years. We've been consolidated five. With the exception of a half year of, of, of police and fire, we haven't given these people any raises. Um, I think since I've been here, we did, we implemented a pay scale and we adjusted the pay scale. But in terms of looking out for our employees, pretty much a pension, we just went off on the healthcare costs. I mean, I, I'm, I'm young. I've worked in a few places. I think most of y'all have worked all y'all lives. And I, I've never heard of a situation where folk showed up to work during their job and the meeting that they have to have is we're cutting your salary by fifteen to twenty percent. Um, and to me, and maybe, maybe that happens, but you, you, you asked me to be in charge. I value our employees' time. They work hard. A lot of them work out in that heat. And to ask them to do, we've been, we've had a hiring freeze. We hadn't hired, we hadn't purchased appropriate equipment for several of these departments. And then to put even more on their backs when, I don't know, in no way, for the most part, is it our rank and file employees' fault. Very few people in this, I think the average salary for our guys is like all-in, including benefits, is like fifty-something thousand dollars. Very few people in this, this, this government make six figures. Um, so I, I, I mean, right now, even in your proposal, we, we're talking about adding three assistant directors because we realize that there's a gap shortage of folks in charge and of folks overseeing. The type of community we want, just like in all things, you're gonna get what you pay for. Right now, when I look at the community, we need to spend more on beautifying it. We need to spend more on blight. Most people don't feel particularly safe. We probably could either spend more on diversionary safety programs or more direct suppression programs with the sheriff's office. But I do know that the consequences of cutting these programs to the levels that have been discussed here today, the completely out, increase crime. They close away job access. And I do know that this is a poor community that lacks educational attainment. We need as a community to be investing more in those areas, in, in my opinion. So us asking today to maintain the same level of funding for those who think they're investing too much. Currently, I think you're getting away with a deal and the libraries, the Transit Authority, if you've been on those buses or rode them, they hot, they don't run right. They, they, they old in some places, but we're not funding an extra route to, to get you to Como, an extra route to get you to Niche High. We're not, the, the, the same ten routes that we ride today, and shoot, in some cases, the same buses have been, been in existence since the Olympics. We upgraded our stuff during the Olympics and we've been piecemealing ever since, back in ninety-six. So I, I, I understand the sentiment for us to wanna cut, but we've done a lot over these years. If you, and I, I know it and I think it, and I know I'm talking extensively, but I, I, I realize that there's a key difference on your experiences with Macon Bibb County government that if you came from the unconsolidated county or if you came from the city. If you came from the city, this tax rate is still lower than what you entered into. We've cut a lot. Maybe not to the, the state recommended guideline, but we've cut a lot. We, we're bare bones in a lot of places. Like I say, in, in solid waste, eighty-five percent of the problem is, we haven't bought a truck. And at least since I've been here five, ten years, we haven't bought a solid waste truck. We outsourced it and have been downsizing it ever since. And now people are confused why we can't pick up trash on time. We got like three trucks left and half the time, one of them's not working. Alright, that's the situation. We need to invest in our community if you wanna see it beautiful and thrive. But I, I yield, I yield.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Watkins. Commissioner Nguyen, got you next.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first, I want to say that I agree with and support the sentiments of Commissioners Allen and, um, Jones, uh, because I feel the same way. A- as they said, we on this commission, none of us want to defund the library, the Transit Authority, the Health Department. But let's, just, let's just be honest, before I was elected to this esteemed group of people up here, I came to the meetings for probably three months and to the committee meetings to listen to what was going on about funding, financing and funding. And I see there's a lot of things that we spend city taxpayer money on that you didn't know we were spending city taxpayer money on. Because these outside agencies, and they're called that for a reason. They're not city departments, they're not city employees and they're not run by the city. The Transit Authority and the Washington Library are, I call them quasi-departments because we have a funding agreement that we must meet with federal government and the state government. But the other outside agencies are just that. We have no real control over them. We don't have anything to do with their day-to-day operations. But they are very important to our community. We all agree to that. The thing is, is that many of these and most of these can find some self-funding. They have the opportunity to get federal or state funding, get grants, have fundraisers, private funding. There's a lot of things you can do. You can match up some corporations with, with some of these agencies. And I've given the example, if some of you haven't heard it, about Como Tires. I mean, we gave them a twenty-year tax break on their property taxes. Let them give something back to our community. Let them be the sponsor for Meals on Wheels, you know, tires and wheels. Let them be the community sponsor. Let some other of these, Amazon, let's get them to be a community sponsor of something. If we were to ask all the, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pick on somebody that's in the audience, but all the attorneys in our, in our, um, city to sponsor a group, one of these agencies or help sponsor them, there's, there's, there's funding out there, private funding, you guys. If I ask you to give a hundred dollars to keep the Meals on Wheels open, I think you would all give a hundred dollars versus your taxes going up. I think there'd be probably, out of a hundred and fifty-five thousand people that live in this community, there'd probably be a good number that would give a hundred dollars to keep that going. And I just think that we need to look now, because I know this is gonna be approved without my agreement, that this four point three six or whatever it is is gonna be approved. I just think we need going forward to look at how we're gonna help these agencies find their own funding. They can do it. If you're a director of an agency and you can't find your own funding, you're not the right director. We need, you need to be, number one, you need to be a fundraiser. That's what you need to be. So that you can be privately funded and you won't depend on the ups and downs of the city's finances. We don't like to have to do this. This is not what we should be doing. The money you pay taxes for should be to support the firemen, the policemen, public works, uh, Parks and Recreation, Facilities Management, things like that. That's what you pay your taxes for, right? That's what you pay your taxes for. The other things are great. We need them in this community. I just have to tell you a little, I have to digress because I have to tell a little story. Friend of mine lives in Bonner, Georgia. She has friends that live in Warrnambool and she works in Warrnambool. She had two visitors come down from Ohio and Michigan. They were doing a training session in Warrnambool. And that night, she says, let me take you into Macon. There's nothing to look at here in Warrnambool. True. So she brought them into Macon. She started with coming in, um, she sought, brought them by Wesleyan College, First Women's College, I think in the United States, if I'm right on that. Uh, showed them that, brought them down Vineville Avenue. First, they stopped at Jim Shaw's and ate, one of the best places in town to eat. And then they went to, uh, she showed them the Big House, the Allman Brothers House, which is privately funded, by the way, and, and volunteers work there. Then she took them on into downtown and she showed them, uh, the Sydney Lanier Cottage first, and she showed them the Hay House, which they stopped and took pictures of. They, she took them down to the Terminal Station and that area there, the Sports Hall of Fame, the Tubman Museum, the Douglas Theater are all down there. And by the way, I have an idea about those two, Terminal Station. We, then she took them down to Luther Williams Park, one of the second oldest baseball parks in Macon. And they stopped and took pictures. We got Pete Rose's name on there, Chipper Jones, you know, things. We have, what I'm trying to say to you guys is, we have things in this city that nobody can offer, nobody else around us can offer. We need to keep people coming into our city to see the things that we have to offer. We need to build on that. We need to have our community come together and support these things that are important to our community, but shouldn't be funded by the city at the whims of the city pack's taxpayer money. So again, I know the budget will pass. It's not one that I wanted to have our citizens have to bear again, two years in a row. And my gosh, if it happens three years in a row, I just think I'll have to resign. But anyway. Um, you won't have to fire me. I'll probably need to resign. But you know, I think that we just need to think going forward as a commission, how we're going to deal with these things. It's not over yet. We've got to figure out how to have these people become self-sufficient. And then we have got to consider the employees. I don't, they've got to consider a four percent contribution to their plan. We've got to move that, we've got to shut down the pension plans. We've got to move to four fifty-seven B or four oh one K, whatever it's gonna take. And we can do that sooner than later, not, not drag our feet on that. That's gonna save our community a lot of money, a lot of money. So you just need to, we need to think about that. We need to do that going forward so we can save money for the future. Put money in our savings account and our reserve fund. So if we have an emergency, we'll have it there. But we have got to come together as a community and decide how we wanna handle these things. And the commissioners need to come together and we've got to decide how we wanna handle our budget to keep us fiscally sound. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Nguyen. Uh, may I approach him, Tim?
Uh, yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, you know, it's, we, we should not be balancing the budget on employees. Once they started working here for many years, uh, there's just been a, a rich plan that they were promised and so, uh, I just don't think we ought to punish them for, uh, the mistakes that we've made. Uh, we pass so many ordinances and resolutions, sometimes more than fifty to a hundred a month. But commissioners, uh, don't oftentimes have an opportunity to go out into the public and educate them on a number of things. And so that's why we always looking for organizations and groups. Uh, Wade McCord has been out trying to educate folks on the, uh, uh, upfront, uh, billing, annual billing with the new VCS system, but yet he has to run his office. Commissioners are passing resolutions. Many of us have been advocates and, and activists before we, uh, have come here. But we just don't oftentimes have enough time to go out into the public. And, uh, just to give an example of, we pass laws all the time. One of the strangest laws or ordinances that we pass is, you know, nobody was down here screaming when we gave Chuck E. Cheese an alcohol license. Uh, and they'll probably say, what? We did? But you know, just what people tend to pay attention to, tethering. Nobody's familiar with tethering in a, in a community where in our culture, we grew, grew up chaining the dog to the, uh, to the tree and the fence and so forth. That's against the law. Nobody keeps up with those things. Uh, uh, seniors over sixty-five, uh, there's opportunities where they could still pay quarterly, weekly, monthly, but it's just not being shared. There's no, no education out there. Uh, we've done a poor job of sharing the information. Uh, we've gotta educate folks on a property, uh, tax versus an O-L-S. It's not right to take sixty thousand property owners and force them to, to pay, uh, for this entire. It's not right to take sixty thousand property owners and force them to pay for this entire millage rate, and a hundred thousand people walk around every day, and just don't pay anything. But an OLOS would reverse that. Everybody, if you have grandchildren, kids, nieces, nephews, going to a store, would pay for an OLOS. Delegation members, which after this vote, is that some of us have been meeting with them, talking to them. And y'all need to understand this, that every delegation member in Atlanta, and we have eight of them, three senators, five house members, all support and agree on an OLOS. Now, how it's spent is where the conversation starts and begins. And so, whatever is decided tonight, regardless, I think we all have to go back and fight, and get our delegation to be on one page and one accord, to help us undo the damage that has been done in this community for the last three years of misled and misguided numbers. You know, people oftentimes stand up here and they continue to talk about consolidation, which is five, almost six years old, and it sounds good, it sounds popular. But we're not going back there, that way. Not going to undo that. Senator Lucas so eloquently said it in a, in a meeting that we had, that we've got to help y'all get out of this mess. And so whatever mess we're in, my commitment is to go out and continue to educate the public, and to go out and try and get an OLOS on this ballot. Because what people need to understand is, tonight, the millage rate is in our hands. We are deciding it. But the OLOS will be in your hands, you decide it. So what would you rather have? An OLOS versus a millage rate? So whatever we do, we all have to get on the same page, get with our local delegation, and get everybody to be educated on an OLOS, of a one penny OLOS that's fair for everybody, one hundred and fifty-some thousand people versus just the sixty thousand property owners. And with that said, I call for the question. With a roll call vote.
Got, got a, a motion to, to call the question. Got one person still, still.
I'll yield, I, I waited and wanted to give everybody an opportunity.
At last.
I'll yield, but I, I stand for calling for questions and roll call vote, or roll call vote, but I yield to you.
Commissioner Jones, you're the last one. Nope, got somebody else's light that came on there, sir. Commissioner Jones, yes, you're, you're.
Yes. You know, and, and I see several of my fellow Realtors in the audience, four hundred and fifty-one in the Middle Georgia Association of Realtors. We are ambassadors to this community. We love Macon, Georgia, we love to sell houses here. But we can also sell in Jones County, Monroe County, Houston County, we can really sell, our license is good for the state of Georgia. But more and more, I hear it, my associates hear it, they don't want to move to Macon, they want to move to a surrounding county, like Jones County, I put one under contract the other day, or Monroe County. Realtors here could verify this. So we're losing, and when you go up this amount, whether it's a hundred and fifty dollars or eight hundred dollars a year, you're impacting their buying power. Even the little garbage fee impacts their gar, their, their buying power. We, we, we hear from lenders, we hear from real estate attorneys, well, they would have qualified, but you added the garbage fee. Or they would have qualified, but now you've raised the taxes. So, when I show property in Jones or Monroe, sometimes we run into a seller, and they're badmouthing living in Macon. Don't like to hear that. Have anonymous will come up to me in a Publix or a Kroger. Don't they know if they raise the taxes, they're not going to, I used to live in Macon, but I don't anymore, but by the way, I live in Monroe, don't they know you're gonna, you're gonna negatively impact the population in Macon, Georgia? You are. So I'm going to be voting against it. I'll be voting against it. I'm all for the library, all for MTA, all for the Health Department, and many other agencies at a lesser amount. But this is not a fiscally responsible budget, and it's not balanced across the board. I hope all these good agencies, regardless of whether you call them outside or whatever, and I don't consider the library and MTA and Health Department an outside agency. That's a part of what we should be doing. Maybe at a slightly lesser amount. But I hope they will start setting up foundations to, so they can self-sustain, because this problem's not, we're not solving the problem tonight. You can say hooray for whatever that you're here for, we are not solving the problem. We've just kicked the can down the road. We've put a Band-Aid on a gushing wound. I yield back.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Schlesinger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am not going to be voting for the millage rate increase of the proposals that's before us, or any other that may be made. District two that I represent is the most impoverished, the most blighted district of any other in Macon, Bibb County. Representative Beverly was here a few weeks ago, talking to us, and one of the statistics that he shared is that twenty-five percent of residents of Macon, Bibb County, twenty-five percent, live at or below the poverty line. And I can tell you that District two that I represent has the lion's share of those citizens. We've heard it from people who have come before us, people who are on fixed incomes, and you know, it's hard for those of us who are still in the workforce to really understand, even relate to, that kind of a, of a situation. But when you're on fixed income, and you've been living on fixed income for decades especially, it is very hard to absorb any expenditure that is sent your way, and, and many people have shared that with us. Now, I very, very reluctantly, a year ago, voted to increase the millage rate, it was the mayor's proposal by, by three mils. And to tell you the truth, there were many in District two who were annoyed with me for taking that stance. And I, I just promised them, "Listen, we've got a balanced budget, in order to balance it, we've got to raise it three mils, and this is just really a correction. We dropped the millage rate for the people, you know, within the city itself, we've, we just need a correction." I promise you, I won't do that again. And I'm going to keep that promise, at least as far as my vote goes. A no vote is not a vote against the libraries. I mean, we all know that the libraries are, are critical to this community. And a no vote is not a vote against the Public Health Department, it's not a vote against the Transit Authority. It's simply a vote that would require our local government, Macon, Bibb County, to do what every other family in Macon, Bibb County has to do on a daily basis, and that's to live within its, its means. I'm not talking about defunding the sheriff's office at all, I'm not talking about defunding the courts, the fire department. We need them all. But at the same time, we have to live within our means. Now, I have no confidence that this budget with a four point one, four point three millage increase is actually going to be a balanced budget. And the reason I do that is our track record. Every budget that's been presented to us since consolidation was presented as a balanced budget, and it ended up, a year later, being a deficit budget. We talk about the, you know, the OLOS, but, and I'd like to see an OLOS passed by the voters of Macon, Bibb County, but I don't know that we can, at this point, depend upon that, the, the passage of an, of an OLOS. I think it has advantages to property owners, but I don't think that it's a slam dunk, at this point, by any means. The zeroed-out budget that we were presented with at the end of June, and which is, you know, still in place, and that we, you know, may have to revert back to, did not come from anybody on this commission. It came from the mayor. It was the mayor's emergency plan that we had, we were told we had to put in effect in order to minimize the exposure of the county to legal proceedings, if we didn't have a budget in place by July the first. I asked, at the time, whether this was temporary, and was assured it was. I asked, at the time, whether the, the terms were negotiable, and was assured at the time that it, it was. If you had told me, six weeks ago, that this same budget would pretty much be in place today, six weeks later, there's no way that I would have, have voted for that. I thought it was, I thought it was, you know, just basically to get us past the July fourth holiday that was coming up during the, during the, the week. So I, I do believe that we need to keep those important agencies funded to, to some level. Zeroing them, them out was not my idea. It seemed to, to me to be something that was just intended to get us through the next few days, really, before something more concrete was, was put in place. It, it didn't come from any one of the district commissioners. The zeroing out came from the mayor. I believe he's the one that needs to be held accountable for that. And I, I also believe that we need to put something in place that's going to enable us to live within our means, and at the same time, keep those important agencies funded. And I think we can, I think we can do that.
Thank you, Commissioner Schlesinger. No, no further lights on, assume you're ready to vote, then a roll call vote was requested, so I, I'll start at that end. Mayor Protem Tillman, how do you vote? Yes or no? Those in favor of voting for the millage rate passed by ordinance and finance would vote yes, those opposed would vote no. Mayor Protem Tillman?
Yes.
Votes yes. Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Votes yes. Commissioner Shepherd?
No.
Votes no. Commissioner Allen?
No.
Votes no. Commissioner Bivins?
Yes.
Votes yes. Commissioner Jones?
No.
Votes no. Commissioner Lucas?
Yes.
Votes yes. Commissioner Schlesinger?
No.
Votes no. Commissioner Wynn?
No.
Votes no. That's one, two, three, four yeses, and one, two, three, four, five nos, requires five, five votes. So, at this point, ladies and gentlemen, we have, we have not adopted a millage rate. So we, we, we've got. However, a millage rate is critical to continued operation, as was explained earlier, as, as was explained earlier by the county attorney. The, the, each amendment that was passed and adopted by this commission contained the floor amendment, that if you failed to adopt a millage rate sufficient to support it, that it would become null and void on August the thirty-first, I believe. There, August the thirtieth. So, the way we stand, with, with no millage rate, you're back to, you're back to a zero increase budget, because you don't have a millage rate at all. So I would, I would suggest, at this point, if any one of the no votes moves to reconsider, to open it back up for further discussion about an alternate millage rate, that, that would be one option for how we could proceed at this meeting. If that fails, if there is no, if there is no motion to reconsider, then we are, we're diving, we're diving down, we're, we're, we're going down, we're going down a, a, a difficult path between now and August the thirtieth. Is, is there, is there a motion by one of the nos for reconsideration? County attorney corrects me, it doesn't have to be a no. Is, is there, is there a motion for reconsideration?
It has to be a no.
Hmm?
It has to be a no.
No, it does not. Commissioner, county attorney says it does not have to be. So is, is there, is there a motion to reconsider?
I make a motion.
No, but I'll turn you on.
We know. I, I make a motion to reconsider and to amend, this current budget is, what, four point three mils?
Yes, sir.
Um. Make a motion to reconsider.
Yeah, right, mo- motion to reconsider, is there a second?
Second.
Got, got a, got a motion and a second to reconsider. All in favor of reconsideration? Now, for further discussion about a millage rate, or the millage rate, or an alternate millage rate, would vote yes to reconsider. Those opposed would vote no, not to reconsider. So the question is, on reconsideration, is there further discussion on the, on the question for reconsideration? Is there further discussion about that?
Two point nine.
Okay. So, all, all in, all in, all in favor?
Question, Mr. Mayor? Clarification on the reconsider, on the reconsider, is it just to reconsider the vote? Can you reconsider with an amendment?
Certainly, once, once we reconsider, if somebody wants to suggest a, a different millage rate.
Yes, sir.
Right, then, then we could, we could, we could suggest a different, as a floor, as a floor amendment, and, and all you got to do is just write down a number.
I got a floor amendment.
Alright. And a floor amendment, floor amendment has been prepared. So all in favor of reconsideration would vote aye, and those opposed would vote no. Commissioner Jones, have you got a parliamentary inquiry about that?
No.
No, okay. Let's do a roll call vote again on reconsideration. Those in favor of reconsideration would vote yes, those opposed would vote no. Mayor Protem Tillman?
Yes.
Votes yes. Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Votes yes. Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Votes yes. Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Votes yes. Commissioner Bivins?
Yes.
Votes yes. Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Votes yes. Commissioner Lucas?
Yes.
Votes yes. Commissioner Schlesinger?
Yes.
Votes yes. Commissioner Wynn?
Yes.
Votes yes. Okay, we, we've got nine, it's unanimous to reconsider. Now, the, the purpose of reconsidering is to, not, not to consider the same millage rate, but a, but a different millage rate. And I'll, I'll call on Commissioner Watkins, your light was on first, sir.
Alright, so currently, we're at four point three two. And I would like to remove point nine six seven from fund balance, well, which is the three point nine eight that we had budgeted from fund balance, which would bring us down to three point.
Alright, let me, let's talk about it in terms of what the floor amendment, what the amendment, the millage rate, the ordinance is, it's an ordinance of Macon, Bibb County, establishing a millage rate right now, twenty-one point eight four eight mils. So it's based upon the total amount. You follow what I'm saying, Commissioner?
Twenty-one point four eight is the base.
Twenty-one, twenty-one point eight four eight.
One point eight four eight. And so from that, the fund balance removal portion was point nine six seven, which is three point nine. And so, from that, the fund balance removal portion was .967, which is 3.9 million dollars. Can we start there?
Yes, sir. So, you have to, so 21.848?
Minus .96.
Minus .96?
20.881?
Well, I came up with 20.898. Did I do my math wrong?
No, it's zero, zero, eight, four, nine from seventeen is eight. I get 20.888. Do it again, Jerry. 21.848, minus .96. The .9, the .96 is, was going into fund balance and putting something back into fund balance, but also being sure that we could fund a, a full year of OPEB next year.
I understand what it's for, but hey, we're at this point, so wait.
So, what we've, what we've got, what we've got now, then, is a reduc, a reduction of right at one, one mil, so rather than a, a four, 4.3. Over last year, it would be about 3, 3.4.
I mean, if y'all don't want it, we keep going. I mean, that's your first, that's your first hit, so y'all are not writing anything. Second, I'm sorry, did I get a second? Man, my mic's on.
We're trying to be sure we got the amendment right first. Yours was to take out the amount going to fund balance, .96 mils, right? Removing that from the budget. That'd make it 20.888. Is that right?
I'm not even sure that he was calculating.
I gotta print it out. Give me one second.
Keep printing it out and handing it out to everybody. I think Jerry can print to that printer right back there, I think.
See, I'm coming through, they're coming all the way up now. Tell me how to get the 2.9. I've been waiting.
He's, he's, he's got it.
I'm not doing that shit. I mean, if y'all want to pitch it, y'all do that without me. You just gotta get another five votes. I'm not voting for it. So, y'all, long as y'all got the vote, you do it.
No, I ain't talking about taking a pitch. I'm talking about, you know, getting him to put something in the... Didn't say that, Cam. Don't put something in. Hey, Ms. Hunt, Ms. Hunt? Ms. Hunt, we're still in session, please, ma'am? All right. We, what we have here is an amendment in writing that changes the, the millage rate from the 21.848 to 28.888.
That's wrong. It's 20.88.
It ought to be 20, 20.888. Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank, thank you. Well, it's just, you know, we, you should, so it is 20, 20.888, which is the nine point, a .96 reduction.
That's right. I'm reprinting it.
Right, which was, which was the, the money that was earmar, earmarked in the budget for fund balance and to take care of OPEB for next year. All right. So, it, is there, is there a, a, a second? That was the motion by Commissioner Watkins. Is there a second to adopt a millage rate of 20.888? By Commissioner Lucas, a second by Commissioner Lucas. So, now, we have a motion and a second for the reduced rate of 20.888 mils. And Commissioner Lucas, I had your light on next. Did you want to have any discussion about this?
My light was on for something else.
All right, all right. Commissioner Jones? I got your light on next, sir. Did you, did you have anything about this?
Was given out, but, but it didn't have an exhibit attached to it, so I'm gonna hand everybody a sheet that shows the exhibit while we're talking about this other.
Mayor Protem Tillman, your light's on, and did you have anything about this?
I, I was waiting for a Commissioner Jones amendment and just for him to share it. That's what I was trying to get.
So, that didn't pass, Mr. Mayor?
Hmm? I don't know. We hadn't, hadn't, hadn't had a vote yet. Motion and a second, we're, we're getting ready to vote if there's no further discretion.
Is it correct all the way around now, Jim?
Yes, I think so. I was just giving...
All right. We have a motion, motion and a second in writing now for a millage rate of 20.888, which would eliminate the, the money, the amount of money that was earmarked for fund balance, and will take us to 20 point, 20.888. I assume that we're gonna do a roll call vote again on this. No further discussion, no lights on. I assume you're ready to vote. We'll start from the opposite end now. And, and go, Commissioner Wynn, how do you vote? Those in favor of a millage rate of 20.888 would vote yes, those opposed would vote no.
88?
Correct.
Not 27?
Correct. It's 20.888. Right. It's 20.888. Ma'am? Votes no. Commissioner Wynn, votes no. Commissioner Schlesinger? Votes no. Commissioner Lucas? Votes yes. Commissioner Jones? Votes no. Commissioner Bivins? Votes yes. Commissioner Allen? Votes no. Commissioner Shepard? Votes no. Commissioner Watkins? Votes yes. Commissioner Tillman? Votes yes. We've got one, two, three, four yeses and one, two, three, four, five nos. At this point, I, I don't think further consideration would, is, is warranted, and so we'll move on and refer this back, since we've got to have it back to the Committee of the Whole, which is where it came from. I, I, we just, we just reconsidered and came up with a lower, lower min. I think further would, would be...
Second? A second?
What was the motion?
To reconsider.
Got a, got a mo, got a motion and a second to, to reconsider for further, further debate and, and vote on this. All, all in favor of re, further reconsideration would vote yes, those opposed would vote no. And let's see if we can't do this by, by a hand, a hand vote. Those in favor of reconsideration? Yeah, those in favor of reconsideration would vote yes, but just give me a hand vote this time. Those in favor of reconsideration, give me a hand vote. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight, and those opposed, one. Eight to one to reconsider with Commissioner Allen being the no vote there. All right. So, now, we're back to reconsideration, further reconsideration. Is there a motion now that we're back to reconsideration?
I'm waiting on him to call me.
Commissioner Jones, got your light on, sir.
Okay. I make a motion to submit my proposal, which equates to a 2.76 mil increase. It's evenly balanced across the board. Everybody's got a copy of it. Everybody's got the exhibit sheet.
But you're changing the budget, right? I mean, or you just substituting your millage rate in to the existing budget?
In effect, change the budget, yes.
Well, any, any, let me clarify, anything, any millage rate that is adopted that's less than the, uh...
Right.
4.2 is gonna require by August 30th that the budget be amended.
Right. And we, I'm, I'm not su, do, do we have to have a additional public hearing? No, no, on a subsequent?
Not on the budget.
No, on a millage rate vote.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. This was setting the millage rate.
Change of millage rate, it changes the budget.
We would have to have a, we would have further, we'd have until August 30th to adopt a budget which matches the millage rate. That was the floor amendment.
What are you after? You want me to propose a millage rate and that's it?
Correct.
All right, I'm proposing a 2.76 mil increase.
I need to clarify, are you increasing that off 40, off of a, uh, what's our base number? We're, we've got a, we've got to come up with a total amount, so we were at a...
21.848 is, is what the base number was in the original resolution.
Yeah. 21.848, so if we take off of that, 4.3 or 4.2?
What was it?
He wants to add, he wants to talk about it in terms of an increase of 2.76, so you'd have to, you'd have to subtract off what the 4 point, if you wanna use 4.2 or include the, uh, the rollback.
Is it like 17.6? Oh, that's your base.
20.41.
21.18?
21.848 was what the original resolution was.
Do you wanna use 4.2 or 4.3?
What did he, what did he say?
Well, he wants to do a baseline. He's not, he's only thinking in terms of how much of an increase he wants. He's not taking, he's saying two.
Commissioner Lucas?
I, I just wanna say, I've, I've served a number of years and have been through a number of budgets, and I have to say that I've not seen a situation like this ever. I think part of the problem is our charter, which set up some tremendous obstacles for approval of a budget. But I think, too, I see some things happening where we are trying to prove some personal points. There's some people trying to make some personal statements. And what we are doing is, we are putting our citizens at risk by lowering this budget artificially, lowering, because it looks good to say we're in the twos. Two, the amount that's being proposed is not going to fund the entities adequately. It's not gonna provide the services that our folks need in this community. And while we're sitting up here going through all of this, and we're having to go through lowering and lowering and lowering and trying to appease different folks, we need to grow up, and we need to realize that this community has, there are certain essential things that need to be provided in this community. And y'all can sit up here and vote for 2 point something, it's not, you're going down, you're talking about improving this city and this county and making it what it needs to be. We are doing a disservice to every single citizen in this community if we continue to sit up here and nickel and dime this budget. We are not going to achieve what we need to achieve by going as low as being proposed. Now, the committee that's been ably chaired by Commissioner Watkins went through reviews of all of these different entities. They came in with their figures and their justifications for what was needed to fund them, and they were very austere. They were very lean. And the committee came out with a recommendation of 3.2 mils, which is lower than the amount that we looked at tonight, that first amount. And the committee determined, the committee of your peers, the committee that's been charged with the budget, formulating a budget to present or approval of it, came up with 3.2 mils and an acceptable level of funding for all of those different entities that deserve not to have to sit up here another night while we play around with their, their futures. And that is what we're doing. We're playing around with these folks. Now, I'm calling on those of you who really wanna serve, who say that you really wanna serve, I'm calling on you to let's be, let's be realistic. Let's go ahead and approve something that makes sense. 2.7 is not going to do it for these entities and these services that we need to provide, and you all know it. Why would you sit up here and vote for 2.7 when it's not gonna do anything for Macon-Bibb? Why would you do that? I'm not voting for 2.7. It doesn't make sense. It will not fulfill our needs. Let's don't play around with folks. We are playing around with the viability of this community. That is what we're doing. What we are doing. So, I'm calling on you, I implore you, let's not approve this 2.7, that 2.7 will not work. It will not work. And I know people want stuff free, but stuff is not free. And, and believe me, this commission has, we have committed ourselves to working as hard as we can to put some auditing functions in place on some of these contracts, to do as much as we possibly can to hold everybody's feet to the fire on these, on these items. And, yes, we're gonna say no to some of these spending proposals that are coming. We've already started doing that. So, we are working to try and get this thing in order. This community cannot operate off of a 2.7 mil increase. We cannot. We cannot, and we will not. So, I'm just, I implore, I implore you to, let's please go back to that 3.2 mil increase that came out of, as a recommendation of the Operations Committee, because it was done, a lot of thought was, how many weeks did we meet? How many, several weeks of meetings that we have held that in the past we have not held? We have not been having budget hearings, but now, we have started to have budget hearings, thorough budget hearings that we should've had all along, but we are having those now. And so, it is time for us to be grown-ups down here, y'all. We can't survive off of a 2.7 mil increase. We can't. And these poor agencies, these folks who have come down here week after week after week, and these advocates that have come down here week after week after week, blind people who utilize paratransit, folks who rely on the buses for getting to work, so they can... so they can pay their taxes and pay their other bills. Entities that are providing service, we have a waiting list at DFAX of over two hundred children for foster care services.
Yeah, and I was waiting for it.
And we have a waiting list of meals on wheels of over two hundred of your mamas and daddies and, and aunties and grandmas and all of them who need that one meal and that wellness visit, once per day, that prolongs their life. Now, I'm not voting for a two point seven, it is not realistic, it will not do for us what needs to be done. So, if that's what's on the table, then I'm, I'm out of that.
Alright, thank you.
Elected to lead, so we need to lead.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas, uh, thank you, Commissioner Lucas, I got two, two of the lights, Commissioner Winn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We can work on two point seven six, we can. You're, you're appealing to the emotions of people, I'm going to speak to the commission as a whole, and if you would let me speak, please. I did not interrupt you. Make 'Em Be A can survive on two point seven six, I don't even want that. It should be less than that, it should be nothing, but we can survive on two point seven six. Commissioner Lucas is playing on the emotions of people, the, the library's here, we're not gonna defund you, we're not gonna defund you.
Let's don't have back and forth, please, Commissioner Lu, Commissioner Lucas, let's don't, let's, please don't have back and forth, please.
So, we can survive on two point seven sixes, that's not what I wanna do, but we can find a way to make this work, we can do the proper funding to the proper places. What you're doing is you're playing with taxpayers' money. You're playing with taxpayers' money and they haven't approved of us doing this. Not as a whole, there's just a small group here, and we've got a hundred and fifty-five thousand in this community. This is not a representation of the community and, and the way they feel. The people in my district don't want a ra, uh, uh, an increase at all, at all. But I, I, I realize that's not realistic, it's not realistically going to happen. So, if we can get it down to two point seven six, I'm for that.
Commissioner Jones, was, was your, was your motion two point seven, two point seven six? Motion was a two point seven six, okay, thank you very much, alright, so with that clarification, two point seven six, thank you. Commissioner Lucas, did you have something else?
Um, I've said everything that I need to say. I, I, you know, I think I've been very clear.
Alright.
In what I had to say, so I stand by that, that you're doing irreparable harm to these entities in this community, the libraries, the, those who ride the bus, those foster kids that are waiting, those seniors who are waiting for, to be, uh, put on the list for meals on wheels, all of those services.
Alright.
All of those services, we need to have a conscience, this needs to be a vote of, of, of conscience.
Alright, uh, thank you, Commissioner Lucas, uh, Commissioner Watkins, I've got you next.
And, and these are just a couple of questions for the sponsor to make sure I'm clear on, on what he's proposing. So, from what I can tell from the outside agencies collectively, probably like a million and a half have been reduced, two hundred thousand here, a hundred thousand there, uh, from different agencies. And a four percent contribution plan, and stop me if I, I make a misstatement, a, a four percent contribution to pension for all plans to start, um, ten, one eighteen?
That's, that's not in this, the only thing we're doing now is setting a millage rate. So now, so then what we'd have to do is go back and, and amend the budget to fit into a, a size five shoe.
I'm understanding this document that I have correctly, the sponsor of the two point seven has provided me with the
Two point seven six.
Attachment to show me how the budget would be bu, balanced.
Well, that would only be, that would only be one proposal, we'd have to vote on it, whatever it is, I mean, we're not voting on the details of it. Right, it, it's just, it's just a number at this point, you'd have to go back and amend the budget to fit.
I, I guess to approve a number for the millage rate today without, I mean, he's, like, I, I... Apparently, we think it costs two point six or two point two million dollars roughly? I, I guess that's why I'm asking you, there's a range of two point six to two point oh when it comes to the pension, which number are you assuming? And the same is true, well, yeah. Like, and then I see a eight point eight on one column and then an eight point five in the other column, so which column?
And, and the...
In terms of?
Again, those details, Commissioner Watkins, are, are not being determined here tonight. The only thing that's being determined here tonight is the, the rate and the two point seven.
Just throwing out numbers arbitrarily at this point?
Yes.
Oh, that's really great.
Well, I, that, that, that's, but the two point, the two point seven six would be an increase over the existing budget rate, which was seventeen point six, six five, seventeen point six five two is the existing millage rate, seventeen six five two.
Since we're just throwing out numbers, why not round it off?
Well, that's not the mo, the mo, the motion, right, that's, that's, that's not the motion. I think it was seventeen point six five two, wasn't it? Yeah, seventeen, seventeen point, seventeen point six five two plus two point seven six, Judge. Seventeen point six five two, that's the existing millage rate right now. And, and the, the, the motion is to adopt a millage rate that would be two point seven six mils higher, uh, six five eleven, seven, six, or thirteen, ones, fourteen, seven, nine, ten would be twenty point four one two, by my calculations, is that what you get, Judge? Twenty point four one two would be the total, total millage rate that we're talking about now. That's a two point seven six mil increase over the existing seventeen point six five two, is everybody clear on that? What we do with that money is entirely up to us. How we, how we car, how we carve the budget back down from where it is now to fit into twenty point four one two is gonna be for, for us to do.
And this is a question, this is a procedural question, um, so for the transit authorities and other outside agencies, how would they know of their funding amount at this present, oh, I'm sorry, are you? May I have the floor?
Go, go right ahead.
Procedural question, probably for the county attorney, so if we change the, to point two, whatever we're changing it to?
Seven six, two point seven six, uh, increase.
Or agencies know of their allotment if we're, I mean, cause how's that work at this point?
We're gonna have to determine that.
That's correct.
Because, because, let, let me see if I can explain it to you, no, let me see if I can explain it to you. The, the, the floor amendment that was attached to each amendment said if a sufficient millage rate was not adopted, that they all become void. So, you'd have to go back and, and consider which ones you gonna put back in and at what level.
And again, this is procedural, cause I, cause I've seen emails from several of these outside agencies listed that have, the libraries and transit authority that have been bleeding through their reserves in this period while we're making up our mind.
Correct.
And one of those emails rec, said August fifteenth, they were pretty sure they were done at that point.
They shut down.
You've answered my question, sir, I'm, I'm, I'm very disturbed at the answer.
I'm just telling you where I think we are.
Are you, are you?
Pro Tem, tell me your light's on next, sir.
Uh, it's probably the most folks that's listening, probably just hearing some unbelievable things right now. Almost sounds like a dream to me, to sit here and listen to colleagues that I've worked with and walked in supporting this community, sit here and play political games secretly behind the scene and disrespect this entire commission, and in particular, the mayor's office, it claimed two and a half years from now that won't be up for another seat. This mayor office and this commission will be in office for the next two and a half years. So, as some of us tiptoe around and claim what we're running for, just know you didn't get here by yourself. And this community will always remember that. No matter how much money you raise, how much doors you knock on, you didn't get here by yourself. And some of those folks won't be standing there with you the next time as we sit here and make these decisions that will affect folks in this community. I can assure you that, I implore us to do the business of the Make 'Em Be A commission. I implore others to go and do the business of the school system for the next two and a half years and allow this government to operate and work without intimidation and political gurus behind the scene. If you have a suggestion, bring it forward. You don't have a suggestion on how you wanna fund the government, then respectfully respect those. It seems like the same thing, the committee has passed a budget, and you hear and see the same thing, the two people of, in this entire commission, two people that have done numbers respectfully, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Watkins, has put forth budgets that we can decide on this evening. And to get to this point after the fifty days that we've had to consider this budget since May, and we're here in almost middle of August, is just unbelievable. It's really unbelievable to me.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
And so, uh, whatever we're gonna support, I'm here to support it, I'm gonna stand by sitting here fighting for this community.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Uh, Commissioner Lucas, I got your light on next, and we got, Commissioner Winn, do you have anything else, your light was still on?
We've gotten so confused here, I don't know what we're doing.
I'm gonna try to straighten that out, I'm just trying to call on people whose lights are, I'm just trying to call on people whose lights are on.
Mr. Mayor, um, I, uh, I wanna move to table, uh, this because it is, well, I moved to, to table, it's obvious that we can't sit up here and go through this stuff and, and understand exactly what we're doing. And when you do that kinda stuff, you mess up. You, you, you know, we have done this before and we have messed up. We need to, uh, table this, we need to have enough time, and I'm sure the, uh, committee can be called together fairly quickly so that we can go through, uh, all of this and take a look at how this would impact, uh, uh, everybody. Cause we're not just talking about, um, so-called outside agencies, many of whom are not outside agencies. Uh, but you're talking about, uh, employees, you're talking about maybe not the sheriff's department, uh, cause they're kinda separate, but you're talking about a lot of other entities and a lot of services. So, we need to tread lightly, uh, uh, here, so, um, that's, that's my motion to, uh, table it.
Is there, is there a second to the motion to table? The, a mo, a motion to table trumps the, the motion that's for, right. No, no, no.
I have a second.
It's a super, it's a superior motion, motion to table can follow a motion and second to, huh? I had nobody yet. Commissioner Watkins?
E, what is the right of notice for meetings on the millage rate? Are we required to do a five day or ten day, or can we meet in twenty-four hours?
I, I don't know the answer to that, I have to research it.
Ha, having advert, having advertised once and getting us to this point, whether you have to re-advertise, you know, a week in advance, and the tax commissioner's standing back there and he's got a drop dead deadline to send out the tax bills, about, I think, August the sixteenth? Yes, sir, I, please, I mean, what's the deadline? You're on, I believe.
Okay, I've got, of course, I've already scheduled a digest turn-in. The, uh, digest turn-in process is based upon the advertisements and the voting of a millage rate. Of course, I can extend and go back and ask for more time, therefore, may very well be granted. However, uh, just look at the ramifications that that might bring with, with the outside agencies as well as the revenue on hand for the county, which is, is in, uh, the hands of the administration. But the process can be done as long as we do it procedurally correct, and that all depends on the process that you, ladies and gentlemen, have.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Commissioner, I appreciate that. Did that answer your inquiry, Commissioner Watkins? Anything else from you?
Not exactly, I'm still curious.
That was a procedural question, and I really need to get, and see if there's a second to the motion to table, if, if not.
I didn't get, is it a five day window or a twenty-four hour window in terms of notification?
I don't think we can answer that question affirmatively either way, I, I think that we just don't know. And if we have to re-advertise, we have to re-advertise a week in advance and two hearings, but I, you know, maybe we can find out if you do it once and have to postpone the meeting, or maybe we could recess this meeting and reconvene it.
I guess that was my question before we tabled, what's the best action?
Re, 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 reconvene.
Asking the question before we tabled it, I didn't wanna close the door.
Rather than adjourn the meeting, we, we recess it, at, at the close and then try to reconvene it, uh, and maybe that would be, no? Okay, okay, I, I got it. I don't know, the answer to the question then is, I don't know. I'm sorry, uh, uh, we, we're just, we're, we're in uncharted water, is there a second to the motion to table? That was a second to the motion to table by Miss, by, by Commissioner Winn. So, you got a motion and a second to table this and send it back to the committee of the whole? Yeah, back to the committee of the whole, so that's, that's, that's the motion, uh, and there's no debate on that. So, all in favor of the motion to table and refer it back to the committee of the whole would vote yes, and those opposed would vote no. Uh, all those in favor of tabling and sending this back to the committee, give me a hand, yes. One, two, three, four. Four, four. Wait, wait a minute. I'm looking, I'm, I'm looking to, please, y'all, I'm looking for, I'm looking to count the votes who are in favor, who are in favor of the motion to table, was yours a yes vote, no? Okay, so we've got, we've got one, two, three, four, I think, right? Uh, uh, one, two, three, four, but none over there, so those opposed to tabling it, opposed to tabling it would be one, Slesinger? Two, three, four, five, five, so it loses, four to five, so the motion to the table fails to carry. So, we're back to the main motion, at this point, the main motion is, is the adding the two point seven six mils, um, to the current or the existing millage rate, and that, let me drop a footnote. Technically speaking, there was a rollback rate that was calculated because the digest increased slightly. So, in order to get us to the seventeen point six five two plus two point seven six zero, it may be slightly more than twenty point four one two, simply because you'd have to go from the rollback number. It's a fraction of a, of a mil, but I can't find it. But, but your, but your, your motion is to go, to add two, two point seven six to the existing millage rate of seventeen point six five two, that's the only clarification I'm trying to get to, but that may be a slightly different number when you add it to the rollback. Maybe a slightly different number of an increase. Right, but it, well, but it would be two point seven six above the existing millage rate. So, is there further discussion on, on that, Commissioner Vivens?
I'd still like to get an idea of, uh, what's cut out, what's cut back. I mean, I have this sheet, but I don't really follow how this goes.
Uh, we, we were just, we were just notified that the rollback rate is seventeen point four eight three. So, two point seven six would only get you to eight and six, or fourteen, four eleven ones, twelve, seven, nine, ten. The twenty point two four three, and, and, uh, we were trying to get to twenty point four one two.
What's the rollback rate again?
Uh, uh, to seventeen point four eight three. So, that would be point, point one six nine, it would need to be added to two point seven six to get you to the same place. That would be... That would be two point, two point nine two nine total from the rollback rate. That would get you to two point seven six above this year's millage rate that was raised, seventeen point six five two. So it would be two point nine two nine, Commissioner Jones, from the, translated. That's taking your two point seven six. But to get a, to get a net increase of two point seven six from the existing rate. We have to do this little additional point one six nine so that it, cause it starts at the rollback rate.
Are you sure of that figure?
Yes, sir.
So what's the total number then?
So the total, total, total number would be.
Twenty point two four three?
Twenty point two four three, correct. Right. That's seventeen point four eight three, which is the rollback rate. No. Trying to, trying to, trying, trying to determine the exact millage rate. The attorney is suggesting we take a five minute recess. So we'll take a five, five minute recess and see if we can come up with, with a written. Made a motion to recess for five minutes for, for comfort stop. Second by Commissioner Winn, all in favor of five minute recess, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. We're in five minute recess, ladies and gentlemen. We're trying to reconvene after a short recess and, and clarification. The, the clarification is whether or not the proposed millage rate increase of two point seven six. Would be calculated on last year's millage rate. Or on the rollback millage rate. And Commissioner Jones has confirmed that he wants it to be from the rollback millage rate. So the rollback millage rate, I am advised is seventeen point four eight three mils is the rollback rate. So if you add two point seven six mils to the rollback rate of seventeen four eight three. You come up with twenty point two four three is your total millage rate number. Twenty point two four three. So there, there, that, that is, that is the number now. For the, for the millage rate. And is there further discussion or question about the millage rate or the number? Attorney says he's gonna print it out for us, just so we'll have something in writing in front of us, which is what we're supposed to do. Soon as we get the motion, I mean, soon as we get it in writing, so we'll have it in front of us. Twenty point two four three? No, he's got twenty four. What the heck is that, huh? Well, yeah. No, no, no. Hold on, hold on, because, because that, that one's wrong. Let me see that one. It's twenty point two four three. Sir? Can I ask you to take your seat, please, sir? Right, it was, it was one that was floating around here. I mean, it was one that was probably just in, in the printer.
Yeah, I've got this one. This one is correct.
All right. We, we have, we have a, a, a motion and a second for, to set the millage rate for the coming year. We're at twenty point two four three, which represents a two point seven six mil increase over the rollback rate. That's the, that's been calculated at seventeen point four eight three. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, I assume you're ready to vote. Roll call vote again on a millage rate of twenty point two four three. Let's start with Mayor Protem Tim. Those in favor of two point four three would vote yes, those opposed would vote no. No. Commissioner, Mayor Protem votes no. Commissioner Watkins? Votes no. Commissioner Shepard? Votes yes. Commissioner Allen? Votes no. Commissioner Bivins? Votes no. Commissioner Jones? Votes yes. Commissioner Lucas? Votes no. Commissioner Schlesinger? Votes no. Commissioner Winn? Votes yes. So you end up with one, two, three, four, four yeses and one, two, three, four. I've got six. We got, we had three, we had three, three, three yeses and six nos. We had three, three yeses and six nos. So it, it fails. Right, it, 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 it fails. So now we're back, back now to a, a motion to, to table. And refer back to the committee of the whole by Commissioner Watkins and second by Commissioner Lucas, is that right? Commissioner Lucas, second, okay. All, all in favor of the motion to table and sending it back to the committee of the whole, signified by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. So it's tabled and referred back to the committee of the whole for further discussion. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. All right, that, that brings us to item B. Which is an ordinance to amend the code to require quarterly billing of the solid waste. And I'll ask clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to amend the code of ordinances of Macon Bibb County. To return to a quarterly billing schedule for solid waste collection. And disposal services to provide an effective date and to provide for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. I'm sorry, we, we got too much going on here. For what? Commissioner Allen?
I'll be glad to explain it.
Is, is there a second to this floor amendment? Motion and second, so further discussion now. County attorney says he can explain it to us.
Yes, Commissioner Jones. Met with the tax commissioner and they discussed the proposed legislation. The tax commissioner has indicated to the commission that he cannot start quarterly billing until July one. So this would allow the tax bill, to allow the garbage to be issued on the tax bill. For the first, for January one through June thirtieth. In amount of a hundred and twenty dollars, that's two quarters. And then the quarterly billing would start moving forward from that point. Each quarter it's sixty dollars per month. Is that correct? And you met with him too?
So you got, you got, you got a floor amendment now and. Right, right. Got a motion and second on the floor amendment. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Jones, have you got something for the good of the all?
Making sure everybody understands, it takes us back to quarterly billing, but it cannot begin until July one of next year. To give the tax commissioner time to implement the process that is putting it on the tax bill for the first six months of next year. So that's it.
Mayor Protem Tim?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. When we changed this system, it was supposed to only cost a hundred and twenty dollars for the software to update it. So I don't understand why would it take an entire year to change it? And I mean, what's the explanation? We gotta hear more either from the, from the sponsor or, I mean, we just put the tax commission. Now, we've been out selling this thing. And so right now, there's a system set up. Where if we educated folks enough that they know they could pay quarterly and so forth. That's part of the, the situation that we're in. And that's why we have this ordinance to ensure it, because the public has been so confused. So, I mean, just tell me, why is it gonna take a whole year to go back to the system? The VCS system that's already in place, that folks don't understand, that we've been out, the community, yes, sir, selling it together.
Put, put tax commissioner, this must be the last meeting he attends, I'm sure.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, at any time I need to defend my office, I will do so. If you could please have someone, because I don't think I'm allowed back there. On Ms. Moore's desk, I have left a fact sheet of quarter, of annual back to quarterly garbage billing. To answer your question. The changing of the dates is not. Your decision to do what you do is on you all. I will facilitate what I can. The question that I was asked was, when can I go to a quarterly billing? All right, my VC, my collection software is a. My VC, my collection software is a real estate tax collection software. It's used by approximately sixty counties in the state of Georgia. You all voted for me to put an annual billing on there, on the tax bill. And the, and I asked that the first bill let, allow me to bill it separate from the tax bill so that taxpayers would not get hit all of a sudden, because you passed it in March of two thousand and seventeen. And I wanted to ensure taxpayers had enough time to contact their mortgage companies. Therefore, I asked, could I be allowed to bill it separately from the tax bill? And then, could you please pass these? Um, but with that being said, is that the reason that I left, or excuse me, not the reason, but when we went to annual billing, our current, our billing quarterly was on an antiquated mainframe. And I don't think I need to talk to anybody about that. I was letting you all know that if you were able to pass this solid waste billing to annual before January of two thousand and seventeen, I could facilitate it going on a property tax. It was voted on and passed in March. I couldn't do it, didn't think I could do it for the taxpayers, and I didn't. I got it out in November. Therefore, with our meeting and the, your question is, why is it gonna take a year? All right? It's because my software is set up to bill annually, not quarterly. So yes, I accept payments. I think there is some confusion around the table between billing and collecting. I can bill something, send a piece of paper out, that is billing. The collection portion comes in when the money comes into my office, just like anywhere else. So you can't wave a wand and make that bill, uh, happen. You've got to integrate the software and everything. Not gonna get into details. I've outlined the fact sheet, straightforward fact sheet of what it's gonna take to go to a quarterly billing. Yes, we collect quarterly payments. I collect payments a dollar a day if people wanna pay me. So to answer your question, we haven't been giving out any information wrong. It's just that if you wanna go to a, a totally quarterly billing system, I've got to have new software, because my software can't do it.
I know I'm using the acronym VCS.
Yes, sir.
Will you please say what the acronym is for others that are not familiar with the system? Because if we are, well, we'll say the acronym first, which is the VCS system.
The VCS is actually, it's a nickname given for Manatron, which is a collection software.
So, so here's, 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 we, the system that's already set up in place, he is allowed to collect quarterly billing already. He can collect monthly billing, payments.
Not billing, thank you.
Pay- payments. The issue is, whether it's his office, our office, has not properly educated the public. So that is why Commissioner Jones did the ordinance. And so, it's in place already, so I don't, that, that's what I'm saying. If we just educate the public and then to sit here and say that you've gotta create an amendment to your document to say that he's gotta go back to a system that he's allowed to do it now, makes no sense to say, we gotta wait till July of next year. Simply tell the people and the public, y'all could come and pay quarterly billing based on this system, but in July of next year, I'll be under a new system. Would that make better sense?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, thank you, Mayor Protem, that's...
You elected official.
That's fine, thank you very much, Mayor Protem.
I, I mean, when I, when I get recognized, I will be more than happy to speak to you.
Well, yeah, well, let him speak, Mr. Mayor, he's an elected official as well.
I, I thought he had spoken.
Let him finish and I, and I'll be done.
I thought he had, I thought he had spoken. Is there a further inquiry of the tax commissioner that you would like for him to respond?
The system is already set up to do quarterly billing. The problem is, this community doesn't know about it.
Thank you, Phil.
So that's why Mr. Jones offered this. So the question to him is, why not just simply go out and tell the public? Or just say, the public can pay quarterly billing right now, but my system, or new system will be in place in July officially, based on his ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, thank you very much. Is that a sufficient question for you to answer, sir?
Yes. Again, a- and I don't mean to play, uh, play the semantics card here, but again, my current system allows me to bill one time a year. Okay? And that's what I did, and you are a hundred percent correct on that. And I allow taxpayers to come in and pay whatever they can, whenever they can. I set the, uh, deadline up for April the first of two thousand and eighteen. Anything after that deadline, there is interest. That is part of the resolution that you all passed back in March of two thousand and seventeen. Now, with that being said, if you want me to go back to quarterly billing, my current system for me to send out a document from that software, I cannot do it. I will have to purchase another software program. And so I can send out four documents instead of one. It does not change how I receive money, you're, you're spot on correct about that. But it does make, but it does, will force me to go and do the conversion, RFP, everything that you see on this document. I'm not for or against the billing. My job as tax commissioner is to collect based upon the resolutions passed by this, by this body here and the state of Georgia. And that is my focus. So you all will have to decide how you want to do it. This is the cost. All right? This is the cost if I want to, if you want me to bill quarterly. And there is a cost to it. The mainframe is out of the question, as you all know. It is, it has been mothballed for good reason. So it's going to cost more money to do it.
Right, thank you very much, Mr. Commissioner. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Watkins, I've got your light on next, sir. I, I yield, I'd... Right? Commissioner, Commissioner Jones, I've got your light on next, sir.
Yes, sir. It, it does take back to quarterly billing. He, he does, he does have...
Buy the software?
Annual, annual payment. So we never should've gone down this road to start with, but, but the board voted to do that. So he can accept money, but after that April first date, you got a, you've got a penalty plus interest plus potential FIA, right? So there you go.
All right.
So that's the reason for this change in this to quarterly billing.
All right. Uh, Commissioner Wynn, got you next.
Here's my question too.
Okay. No, no fur- no further, uh, lights on. I assume you're ready to vote, uh, all in favor of the floor amendment, uh, to go back to solid waste, uh, I mean, go back to annual billing of the solid waste? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go back to quarterly billing of solid waste, signify by saying aye? Opposed, no? Get, the ayes have it, uh, and the, the floor amendment, uh, is adopted. All right, um, we've removed...
Now we gotta vote on the whole thing, right?
No.
Okay.
I thought the floor amendment was the substitute bill.
That's fine, we can do it that way.
Right, floor amendment was the substitute bill.
Well, let's just vote to make sure. Used to, we would do it. Well, okay. Trying to make sure we don't get no confusion here.
No, I think it'd create more confusion to, to vote on it again. We've, we've got a floor amendment, which is complete, is it not?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So the floor, floor amendment, that was voted on. Okay. Uh, so that takes us to item D. A resolution adopting a streetlight, uh, banner, uh, policy. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission adopting a streetlight banner policy and for other lawful purposes.
The Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye? Opposed, no? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. That takes you to item E, um, which is a resolution, uh, for the May to execute an agreement with Georgia Behavioral Health Services to provide home investment partnership funds. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission.
Let's have order, ladies and gentlemen, please. We're still, still trying to conduct, still trying to conduct business up here.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Georgia Behavioral Health Services, Inc. for Macon-Bibb County to provide home investment partnership program funds in the amount of three hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-five cents for construction of five residences at nine four five Maynor Street and nine five eight Schaefer Place to provide rental houses, housing for extremely low-income homeless individuals and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye? Opposed, no? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item F is a resolution to authorize the May to execute an agreement with Macon Area Habitat for Humanity using home investment partnership program funds. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Macon Area Habitat for Humanity, Inc. for Macon-Bibb County to provide home investment partnership program funds in the amount of a hundred and ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars for construction of two single-family homeownership units in the Lenmore Estates neighborhood at four three six two Worsham Avenue and four three seven four Worsham Avenue and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye? Opposed, no? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item G is an ordinance to approve the budget for economic and community development. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve and adopt the Economic and Community Development Department, CDBG, home and ESG budget for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Commissioner Jones?
What is, what is that budget? I had to miss that meeting.
I'm sorry?
Do we know the amount of that budget?
A million, eight hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars of CDBG funds from HUD and a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, uh, in CDBG revolving loan funds, um, is, is what I, what I have, uh, here. And each year, the Economic Community Development receives an allocate for home investment. The first was CDBG, home investment is eight hundred and sixty-two thousand, forty-nine dollars in home funds with an additional hundred and twenty-two thousand in home program income. And then there's a final ESG grant amount of one forty-three, a hundred and forty-three thousand, one dollar in ESG. Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Is there any further question? Hearing none, all in favor, uh, of the ordinance, signify by saying aye? Opposed, no? The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. That takes us to item H, uh, which is a, a resolution to execute an agreement, um, for all, with, for roofing repairs at the courthouse. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with ARS JH, Inc. doing business as All South Roofing Solutions in the amount of ninety-five thousand dollars for the courthouse annex roofing repair project payable from two thousand and seventeen SPOSS bond proceeds and our two thousand and eighteen SPOSS revenues and for other purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye? Opposed, no? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item I is a resolution to, to buy a rescue extrication vehicle for the fire department. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Custom Truck and Body Works, Inc. in the amount of a hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred dollars for an all aluminum walk-around rescue extrication vehicle to be paid from two thousand and seventeen SPOSS bond revenues and our two thousand and eighteen SPOSS revenues for calendar year two thousand and eighteen, public safety, fire upgrade line item and for other purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye? Opposed, no? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item J is a, an ordinance, uh, to appropriate four hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars for stormwater emergency repairs. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve and authorize the appropriation of four hundred and fifty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars from two thousand and seventeen SPOSS bond proceeds and our two thousand and eighteen SPOSS revenues to provide funding for stormwater management emergency and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye? Opposed, no? The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. Uh, item K is a, a budget amendment of, for ninety thousand dollars within the sheriff's office. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve a budget amendment to the FY eighteen budget for the transfer of funds in the amount of ninety thousand dollars attached hereto as amendment number fifteen and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion?
Is that buying seventy cars?
No, it was, it's for repairs. He was, he's changing the money from one line item to pay repair bills to ninety thousand dollars, is my recollection. Uh, I, uh, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye? Opposed, no? The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. Uh, item L, uh, is a, a resolution to an approving agreement with Savannah Construction and Preservation for construction of Wise Avenue Park. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Savannah Construction and Preservation, LLC for the construction of a park at Wise Avenue in the amount of five hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars payable from the two thousand and fifteen Blight Bond Wise Avenue Project property construction contracts account and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye? Opposed, no? The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. That brings us to new business, and there are a lot of items of new business that have been prepared. Uh, first, item A is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute, um, beverage agreement with Coca-Cola Bottling Company, United East, LLC doing business with Macon Coca-Cola Bottling Company in the amount of forty-two thousand dollars over seven years to be paid, uh, to Macon-Bibb County Recreation. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Uh, item B of new business is an ordinance to amend Chapter two, Article six, Division thirteen by adding section two dash eight four zero through two dash eight four five two of the code to establish a public art commission. I'm gonna refer that to the Economic and Community Development Committee. Uh, item C is a resolution requesting the issuance of a request for proposal regarding the installation and maintenance of surveillance cameras and/or red light cameras. I'm gonna refer that to the Public Safety Committee. Uh, item D is a resolution to direct the county attorney to prepare the necessary legislation to authorize the consolidated government to replace the Macon-Bibb County Planning and Zoning Commission as the legal entity with responsibility for administering the planning and zoning laws from Macon-Bibb County, beginning effective January the first, twenty nineteen. I'm gonna refer that to the Committee of the Whole. There are five sponsors for that. Joe Allen, Mallory Jones, Scotty Shepard, Al Tillman and Valerie Wynn. Uh, item E is a resolution to approve the Sixteenth Amendment to the twenty eighteen SPOSS project timeline and budget as presented by the SPOSS project manager. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item F is an ordinance to approve and authorize the appropriation of a hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred dollars from twenty seventeen SPOSS bond proceeds and/or twenty eighteen SPOSS revenues from twenty twenty cultural and public auditorium line item to twenty eighteen cultural and public Luther Williams Field line item and for other lawful purposes. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item G is an ordinance, uh, to approve and authorize the appropriation of seventy-one thousand dollars from the twenty seventeen SPOSS br- bond proceeds and/or twenty eighteen SPOSS revenue proceeds from twenty twenty-three cultural and public grand opera house line item to twenty eighteen cultural and public grand opera house line item and for other lawful purposes. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item H is an ordinance to approve and authorize the appropriation of a hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars from the twenty seventeen SPOSS bond proceeds and/or twenty eighteen SPOSS revenues from twenty twenty-three parks and recreation Bowden line item to twenty eighteen parks and recreation bow- Bowden line item and for other lawful purposes. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item I is a resolution to approve and authorize the mayor to execute the Second Amendment to the Consulting Services Agreement for Blight Task Force Initiative between Macon-Bibb County and the Georgia Behavioral Health Services. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item J is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an amended... Item J is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an amended professional services agreement with Rum Creek Enterprises LLC to include the assignment of additional project manager duties for projects not identified as SPOSS projects. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee for further evaluation and study. Item K is an ordinance to approve a supplemental appropriation for the transfer of four thousand eight hundred dollars from fund balance to the FY nineteen budget of, to the Superior Court Small Equipment Account for the purchase of digital court reporting, recording equipment. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item L is an ordinance to approve a supplemental appropriation for the transfer of twenty-two thousand dollars from fund balance in the FY nineteen budget to the Superior Court Small Equipment Account for the purchase of digital court reporting equipment. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Uh, item M is an, uh, an ordinance to approve a budget amendment to the FY nineteen budget for the transfer of funds in the amount of eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars from salary budget line items to cover part-time bailiffs and workers' compensation. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item N is an ordinance to approve a supplemental appropriation for the transfer of ten thousand dollars from fund balance in the FY nineteen budget to sponsor GCAP students in attending the National League of Cities Annual Youth Conference. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item O is a resolution to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Wakefield Beasley and Associates Architects Incorporated for a needs assessment for the Macon Bibb County courthouse in an amount not to exceed ninety-one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars payable from twenty-seventeen SPOSS bond funds and/or twenty-eighteen SPOSS revenues courthouse addition courthouse line item. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. And finally, item P is a resolution to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Ogles Construction Incorporated for landscaping and exterior renovations at the Macon Centerplex in the amount of one hundred and thirty thousand dollars payable from sponsored programs account for the re-beautification project at the Macon Centerplex Coliseum and Convention Center. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. There may very well be additional items that come down during the remainder of the week from the county attorney's office, so I would urge you, if you're interested, to check the agenda that comes out on Friday afternoon for additional items that will be taken up at committee meetings, beginning at nine o'clock AM next Tuesday, the fourteenth of August in the committee meeting room. So, check the agenda on Friday to see, review these agenda items and others that come down from the attorney's office and are referred to the committees. Uh, now we have a last, uh, public comments on non-agenda items, and Gwen Westbrook has been waiting patiently, I think. Gwen, are you still here? Gwen Westbrook wanted to talk to us. I'm sorry, Commissioner Watkins?
A, and again, this is a matter of procedure. With our, when we passed the budget in July, we, we had set up in the one forty-eight budget that we reverted back to. It was thirty days, um, or a month's worth of salary set up for the Parks and Recreation Department and Parks and Beautification Department, and that thirty days was up probably a couple days ago. So, I was wondering what is the process with our internal departments going forward?
Let, let me clear, we have a budget now, and, and the budget is still based upon the, uh, the, the millage rate that wasn't passed tonight, uh, but, but it's gonna cease as of August thirtieth. You know, so you're gonna have to fund that stuff through this, the...
I think the, the amendments that were adopted is what, is what we're gonna rescind. The base budget is still there. The draconian budget is still there, just if you hadn't done anything else, don't pass a millage rate between now and then. It's the amendments, those ten amendments that are gone.
I, I guess the original budget, though, only factored in thirty days for internal departments.
You'd have to amend the budget to make up for the budget shortfall that you're already gonna incur. You're gonna have to notify, you're gonna have to notify people of layoffs, and, and that takes thirty days, you have to give them thirty days notice, so you're gonna have to find that money somewhere else in the budget to add back in.
Though, even though those budget has been depleted at this point, there's thirty days that we're gonna have to pay out of the fund balance.
Yeah, you're gonna have to give them thirty days notice of a layoff.
Okay.
Reduction in costs.
And preferably we don't go to that point, but you gotta start the process today.
Maybe, maybe if we can pass a millage rate.
Sir?
Yeah, sure, absolutely. All right, Gwen, where are you?
Ten days from now?
I'm telling you, that's a heck of a way to run a railroad. Ms. Westbrook, you recognize, what do you want to tell us? Yes, ma'am, that'd be fine, go right ahead.
Um, I know we took the, um, a, agenda off, a fee off the, uh, agenda for the advanced disposal services. I just wanna, um, say to the commissioners, when you all revisit this, to please look at this thoroughly. Uh, I have received some phone calls, and what we wanna do is make sure that when, uh, if you all adopt this, um, adjustment for the new unit rate of, of total fourteen dollars eighty-three cent for the advanced disposal, because at this point, I think they're limited to what, uh, uh, the amount of garbage they can pick up, and what we don't wanna do is I need for you all to look very carefully at, to make sure that we're not eliminating sanitation workers', uh, jobs.
Thank you very much, Ms. Westbrook, well said. Anything else?
Yes, one other thing.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Uh, I think it's on there. Um, on Harrison Road, um, there, I, I had a meeting back in November, uh, in reference to the traffic on our street, and we've basically got that resolved, but I don't, in that meeting also, I discussed, there are a, on Harrison Road, right before you get to, um, our gas station, there are a lot of trucks parked there beside the road there, and it's a safety issue. Sometimes it's ten trucks, ten big trucks, the trailer trucks, uh, that are parked beside the road. I most like to hit one of them one night because they're parked so close to the road, and then they're hanging out in the road. So, I addressed that in this meeting, uh, too, in November last year, but, you know, nothing has been done. Um, Mr. Thornton, that owns the property there, has, uh, called here, uh, but he was told that nothing, uh, could be done, I guess because it's private property, but the, the trucks are not actually parked on his property, really, it's parked on the side of the street. And so, what's happening now is you got a lot of litter, you got, whether they're changing their tires, they're just throwing them out in the side of the road, you got bed mattresses, you got trashed, it, it's just litter there. So, uh, like I said, I discussed it in the meeting that we had last, um, last November, I think the sheriff, we invited the sheriff and the commissioner out to that meeting, but it's gotten worse, it's, it's started, uh, they've started littering, they're leaving, taking stuff out the truck. Sometimes the, the whole truck is not there, they leave the trailer parked there, but sometime it's ten trucks parked beside that road, they're, they're, they're left there every day, all day, on the weekends. So, it's, it's a safety issue, and also they start littering, and it looks bad. Uh, we're gonna look at trying to clean it up, but we don't need to clean it up, and they're gonna continue to stay there and to, to, uh, keep littering there.
Thank you, Ms. Westbrook, appreciate your patience, appreciate you being here. Thank you very much. Uh, thank, thank you very much, Sheriff, we, we appreciate that. We, we need all the help we can get. Tim Thornton, are you still here? Uh, come ahead, sir, I understand you want to talk about P and Z. At this damn point, I don't know. Ms. Thornton, you recognize, sir, but, but brevity would be appreciated at this point.
I'm aware about five o'clock yesterday of the resolution to abolish planning and zoning as we know it, and was pretty alarmed, having been in this business for thirty-five years. We routinely, we deal with them on a routine basis. I would dare say that I've been to planning, in, in front of planning and zoning hearings more than all of you combined, with the possible exception of the mayor and his practice of law, and that's, that's a huge measure, um, to do away with them. I won't debate that tonight, but we would, I was very disappointed, almost a little offended, that we didn't get an opportunity to, not, one, be notified as an interested party, and two, to be heard, and, and I will say, the current planning and zoning, when they have a major change in regulations, they call in my real estate and development group and give us an opportunity to be heard as interested parties. I would ask that, whatever the appropriate committee and forum is, to give us that opportunity, whether that's a, a public forum or a interested parties meeting, please don't pass that before given. We have a lot of, a lot of people in my business, myself included, have a lot of reservations, concerns, questions about it. Please don't pass that without giving us an opportunity to be at the table. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Thornton, we pre- appreciate you being here, appreciate your patience. Cleopatra Simpson, are you still here? Ms. Cleopatra Simpson want to talk to us about voting? I, I gather that she's given up the ghost and gone home. Chet Novak, Ms. Novak still here? He's a, a regular customer, wanted to talk to us about the upkeep of property, Ms. Novak? Ms. Novak has given up the ghost and gone home. Uh, Mr. Stephen Taylor, uh, Riverbend, uh, wants to talk to us about public safety issues? Is he still here, public, Stephen Taylor? Given up the ghost? Um, Lonnie and Ella Hall? Still here, bless your heart, come on, come on, come on down. I don't know what you want to talk to us, uh, about, uh, because you didn't write that down, but, but we appreciate your patience with, with us, and you're recognized to speak.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna speak for my wife. Um, but, but, uh, to the rest of the commissioners, it's like if you give them your sign. Um, I was born here in Macon, Georgia. I was raised here, went to school here. For making short, uh, my father raised us, worked for the sanitation department. He had a third grade education. He went from a helper on the back of truck to a driver, one of the first black drivers in Macon, Georgia. Okay? I have a deep respect for sanitation people, working in the heat, all kinds of weather, you know, and, uh, I think it's a great disservice we have done to our sanitation. We don't give them what they need to work with, um, because without them, we really would have a problem. Uh, one of the things, that's all I'm gonna say about that, because the number of time is short. Um, school buses. We passed the res, passed the bill here, you guys did, about school buses having cameras on them. I was listening to the news that night, and the school buses, uh, chairman or manager said that we had cited it, nine, some citation for school, uh, running school bus sites. In the same interview, there were two figures given out, one was nine, one was five, on the same news broadcast. Now, I sit there and I Google it to find out how much money we had recouped from those three hundred dollar tickets. Oh, per ticket. So, my question is to you guys, how much of that money have we collected? Have you guys collected for us? Because, see, that's money that need to go in the pot. Thank you. See, see, okay, so, Mayor, what, what are you guys doing? You're our, our leaders, you're here to represent us, you're charging three hundred dollar ticket for a person running a, a school bus, like, which is not a, it's not a large sum of money when you consider a child's life, okay? But you're, you're not collecting it, please help us. Please help us. See, that's not helping us. Uh, I think, uh, my commission here, Ms. Tillman. Ms. Tillman, and I met shortly after he got in office. We didn't agree on everything, 'cause we had to talk. But one thing I give him credit for, and, and, and some things we've talked about since then, you guys have failed us, and we need some answers, we need some results. We don't need this pitter-patter around. I've been serious, I drove from Dublin, Georgia, I'm a veteran, by the way. Ten years of service to this country.
You, you, your time is up, so wrap, wrap up quickly, sir.
But, I'm saying, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Y'all got to get on the ball.
Yes, sir.
Got to get it.
Thank you.
Because if I don't pay my taxes, you come and get me. If I don't pay my, oh, one other thing, the house, the subdivision on Chambers Road, this had all this cohesion going on about paving the streets and, and the, the, uh, landowners of that apartment comebacks on Chambers Road is like six thousand dollars behind their water bill? Come on, Mayor, help us out.
Thank you very much, sir, we appreciate you bringing, appreciate your comments. Uh, Mr. Mike McCord? Mr. McCord, appreciate your patience, don't know what you want to talk to us about, but you'll recognize, come forward, sir.
I was gonna talk about the budget, but I didn't get an opportunity to.
You're welcome.
I know, I was in a haste and a hurry trying to get in here, 'cause I got locked out earlier.
That, that's fine, sir, be glad to hear from you.
I've sit, I've sat here since four o'clock today, and I detect a lot of hostility up there between y'all. Y'all are here to do our business. Um, I, I live in District One, and, and we don't wanna see a millage increase, you know, but nobody that was here today wants to shut down the library, wants to shut down the transportation department. Nobody is, is that hostile and wants to put, put these people out. Y'all have got to figure this out. We have put our trust in y'all. Now, it's time to get down to business, you know? I don't play golf at Bowden Golf Course, the, I don't, I don't, I don't go to s- some of these, um, museums that, that my tax dollars is going to, to, to keep open, and that's my, that's my prerogative, I don't have to go to those, I don't have to participate, I don't have to go, but I understand, I had a child, my child is in college, I'm paying college tuition. I can't afford a four hundred dollar a year millage, uh, four hundred dollar a year tax increase on top of a two hundred dollar tax increase last year. You know, you act like it's, you know, it's twelve dollars a month, it's more than twelve dollars a month. And, and, and there's people that live on a fixed income that just can't afford it. So, these, these outside entities need to figure out how they need to run their businesses or, or their, or their departments without my tax dollars or the rest of these taxpayers of Bibb County. And, and, you know, and, and I know it's tough, but I, but, and, and this, and this meeting is gonna be posted on the website, I'd be, I'd be ashamed as a Bibb County citizen to know that people outside of Bibb County can look and see what kind of knee-jerk reactions we had here tonight. It's, it's, it's awful, you know? I mean, it, it, you, you, you guys gotta do better than this, you know?
Thank you very much, Mr. McCord, we appreciate your patience, appreciate you being here, appreciate your comments. Mr. Richardson, are you still here with us? Mr. Richardson, we recognize for grassroots reflections. Be careful coming down that slope, Mr. Richardson.
I share with you a portion of my evening prayer from my, uh, uh, Book of Common Prayer, the Old Testament part, uh, the Proverbs, chapter three. My son, forget not my law, but let thine heart keep my commandments. For length of days and long life and peace shall they add to thee. Let not my mercy and truth forsake thee, bind them about, bind them about thy neck and write them upon the table of thine heart. So shalt thy fine favor and good understanding in the sight of God and man. Trust in the Lord with all thine heart and lean not unto thy own understanding. In all thy ways acknowledge him and he shall direct thy paths. Be not wise in thine own eyes, fear the Lord and depart from evil. It shall be health to thy navel and marrow to thy bones. Honor the Lord with thy substance and with the first fruits of all thine increase. So shall thy barns be filled with plenty and thy presses shall burst out with new wine. My son despise not the chastening of the Lord, neither be weary of his correction. For whom the Lord loveth he corrected. For whom the Lord loveth he corrected, even as a father the son in whom he delighteth. Happy is the man that findest wisdom, the man that getth understanding; for the merchandise of it is better than the merchandise of silver and the gain thereof than fine gold. She is more precious than rubies, and all the things thou canst desire are not to be compared to her. Length of days in her right hand, and in her left hand riches in honor. Her ways are ways of pleasantness, and all her paths of peace. She is a tree of life to them that lay hold upon her, and happy is everyone that retaineth her. The Lord by wisdom hath founded the earth, by understanding hath he established the heavens. By his knowledge the depths are broken up, and the clouds drop down to dew. My son, let not them depart from thine eyes, keep sound wisdom and discretion. So shalt they be life unto thy soul and grace to thy neck. Then shalt thou walk in the way safely, and thy foot shall not stumble. When thou lies down, thou shalt not be afraid, yea, thou shalt lie down, and thy sleep shall be sweet. Be not afraid of sudden fear, and neither of the desolation of the wicked when it cometh; for the Lord shall be thy confidence, and shall keep thy foot from being taken. Will hold not good for them to whom it is due, when it is in the power of thy hand to do it. Say none to thy neighbor, go and come again, and tomorrow I will give.
Thank you very much, Mr. Richardson. No other people that have signed up to talk to us about non-agenda items. I see no points of personal privilege, so we've concluded our agenda. Can I get a motion to adjourn? And without, and without objection, we are adjourned.